All right, good evening. Special City Council Workshop, 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 13th. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, you want to do roll call, and welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Kempson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Bogosian?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Han?
Here.
Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
Mayor Quorum?
Thank you.
First item is citizens' comments.
Mr. Michael Bailey?
It is, Desiree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I feel the city is exposing itself to massive liability for the loss of properties at Breach Island. This issue is not an emergency but another chapter in a long-running problem. So far, the government has failed at all levels to remedy the erosion issue, and now the property owners want to use their own funds on their own land to protect their property. The proposed ordinance is worded to make it impossible for the property owners to act. If the city continues to block their efforts, then the city will end up in court and likely lose, just like DEHEC has lost in similar cases in the past. Even if you're against the property owners protecting their property, there's no reason for the city to get between the property owners and DEHEC. This is for DEHEC to fight as they see fit. The city should not tie the hands of the property owners and expose the city to responsibility for correcting the problem. Further, I support protecting the barrier islands set aside to be left in their natural state. There are more than a dozen of them located between here and Georgetown. Isle Palms is not one of those islands. DEHEC and the Coastal Conservation League want to add our island to that list. They are not our friends. Read what the individuals at those places write. They write, they want to set aside all barrier islands as natural preserves. Also, you can look to see what the state did on the IOP connector lanes and the parking along Palm Boulevard to know that these people are not always our friends. The city should be an advocate for its citizens and not fight against them. The city should remove all barriers to its citizens protecting their property. If the state wants to fight this battle, let them, but the city should be working in the best interest of its residents and their property. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Don't have any special presentations tonight. Desiree, we have the dashboard and short terminal report.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I have, I have, I will be providing an updated dashboard. The only changes to that is, are shown in the fire department calls by type. We noticed a, an error in the way that the graph was pulling, it was pulling all of 2023 numbers for the month, so this new version corrects that, and we'll make sure that the version online is the new one. So that's really the only change that you'll see. Did somebody, did I give somebody my copy? No, I have it right here. All right. Okay. So we'll go into a little bit more detail on revenues and expenses when we have the financial report from our finance director. But we are experiencing and seeing a, we're not meeting budget on revenues for, for the month. Some of it is due to timing, and we'll talk a little bit more when, when Deborah gives her report, but I just wanted to highlight that. For personnel vacancies, we have three police officer vacancies and three paramedics vacancies in the fire department. In the police department, we've issued a conditional offer for one of those three vacancies, and we have currently five folks moving down the path, either interview or doing background checks, and we have four new applications that are being processed. With the fire department, we have not received any new paramedic applications, and that is something that we are evaluating where and how we are soliciting for those positions. We know that it's an issue that is impacting a lot of other communities in Charleston County for their paramedic program, so we are being more diligent and intentional about promoting that, that opening and trying to seek applicants to come, to come work with us. One of the things that we are evaluating as well is offering an incentive to employees that refer and bring a, somebody that they know, and we end up hiring them, and they pass their six-month probationary period, whether a, you know, $250 fee, incentive given to the person that referred them. So we're just looking at other options to try to improve our recruitment efforts for, for that, for that position. For police department charges, you can see that traffic and livability continue to exceed our numbers for 2023 and 2022. Police department has intentionally stepped up enforcement on traffic. As you all know, it's one of our number-one complaints on the island during the season and off the, and off-season, so you see a pretty significant increase there compared, compared to last year. Same thing, traffic, traffic stops and calls for service have increased 55% and 35% over same time last year. Some of those are self, checking in with the chief. They're self-initiated calls by PD, so if the police officers notice something that looks suspicious, rather than, they would call it into dispatch, and it's logged as a call for service. So we have seen an increase in calls for service year over year, but a lot of it, or some of it at least, is self-initiated by, by PD. For the municipal court, number of cases is, we're seeing relatively flat compared year, year after year, a little bit higher than 2023, but looking like it's leveling off to 2022 numbers. Fire department calls, 40% increase from 2023. We had a total of 101 calls for the month of January. 39% of those, I'm sorry, 30, yeah, 39 of those were auto aid calls. 33 were canceled and six were attended. And you can see, we keep, continue to track the type of call. 35% of the calls were responded to for Isle Palms residents and 65% were non-island, non- Isle Palms residents.
That's right. If you back out the 36 that were canceled, where are we as far here today on the calls? Apparently, my brain's not working well. I'll do that now.
If you compare the six, well, we would have to look back the prior years, looking at the canceled calls.
Ultimately, is, are we getting benefit from the automatic aid? And so if you take out the canceled, then it seems like that's more apples to apples.
We can look at that, and I can get back to you. I can't, I don't have it right in front of me. No changes or relatively flat for public works, garbage and yard debris collection compared year over year. Saw an increase in recreation department registrations for the month of January, and that's really being driven by our staff soliciting and selecting all the vendors for all 2024 events, whereas in the past, we would do it maybe a month or two before an event, they solicited vendors for the entire year. So all of them were logged into our system either in December or January. And then for the building department, no new homes were permitted in January, and we've have a currently licensed year for 2024, which as you all know, would start in May of last year and go through April of this year. We have 1,873 short-term rental licenses issued.
With respect to that? I'd ask for inquiry on the number of dormant licenses that are out there. Did we ever just determine that, or do we need to wait until the new renewal year?
How would you?
So I think we've never come up with a perfect way of defining dormant, meaning to be, to be kind of blunt about it. Would dormant be never had any activity? Would that be, because we, we do have the ability to kind of sort by revenue, potentially on nights rented, potentially, so we could get to it in different ways, on different pools, but I don't know that we're, we'll ever get a perfect number of, unless it's never rented, never declared any revenue, we could probably get that number out.
Is there, is there a particular threshold that you would like to see? Any, any rentals that were occupied by renters for more than two months?
In the last year, were any of the licenses that were issued never used?
We, we, we don't know.
Not, not used in the last year? Okay. Which means that they did not file information that they need to in terms of revenue and, you know, and the money due to the city. That's what I'm asking for first, and then the second one, if you could do a deeper dive and just say, those that only revenues of less than $10,000, $10,000 to $20,000 or more, you know, kind of thing. But the main thing is, there's been a lot of talk about the fact that we think that because we, we, we're discussing rental caps, that a lot, people went out there and bought, and bought licenses that they had no intention of using. Now, this would have been within the last 12 months is what I'm talking about. So how many of those were actually, how many people actually did get a license and never had any revenue for short-term rental? That's the first question.
We, yeah, we'll, we'll try to get that and get, include that maybe in a second page of this report.
Yeah, because is, is it a 12-month period at the end, end of December that you would have a record of it? I mean?
We haven't had RentalScape that long.
Yeah, RentalScape has not been, we have not been using that software that long, and we can run it as of, the rental licenses issued as of a certain date. We could wait until renewal period and run the 2023, I'm sorry, the 2024 licensee at that point, which we did, which we did in 2022 and 2023.
Whichever is more efficient, that's all. I don't have to have it right away. I'm just curious to have it.
Yeah, and would you be able to tie that out? I mean, when we get ATAX remits, we do have it by address, as I recall. That would be a way to determine whether or not one's been active. If we, if they've shown up on the ATAX remit list by the, by the address, and I know sometimes we get Sullivan's or they get ours, that would be probably the best source to find out whether or not they actually.
The activity. Yeah, we'll, we'll pull a report chair with you. I'll just let you react, see if it answers your question. That's all I have, Mayor.
So we've got also the department reports are included in your packet. Any questions from those or need, you need a department heads to address anything?
On the, I just have one question on livability statistics. It says there's, for the month of January, appears there's 13 island resident business license violations. What, what would that be?
I'll get the chief here.
That feels awkward. Those would typically be, like, we went to their house, they probably had somebody that they hired. It wasn't necessarily that the resident was fined with a business license.
Okay.
They probably had like a landscaper or something like that that did not obtain the business license, and it was just against that business.
All right, good.
We can look at coding that different, because I could see how that's confusing, so I could certainly address that.
Chief, one question for you. I, and I think I sent an email to Desiree, she probably sent it to you about this, and so my, my question is, I was pulled for speeding on the connector. I was guilty, not complaining about that. That's not the issue. The, the issue that I've had a number of people tell me, how could Mount Pleasant pull you on the connector? We're supposed to have an agreement that only IOP polices the connector, because the, the officer that pulled me was quite reckless in what he did with his coming around to get me and on the connector and then doing a, a three-point turn after the hump on the connector, so he was hidden from oncoming traffic. No? But, but it was just, it was a very reckless situation that made me uncomfortable, it made me nervous when, you know, what he was doing, and so I don't know if, are they now patrolling the, the connector?
Just to make sure I got that, it was not one of our folks.
No, it was, it was Mount Pleasant.
So the way that, the connector is a, an interesting area, because it is actually shared.
Right.
So we have jurisdictional, as a municipality, to the flagpole. Everything from the flagpole to where asphalt meets concrete on the Mount Pleasant side is shared with the county, Isle Palms, and Mount Pleasant. The same agreement we have with Charleston County to enforce between the flagpole and the, the asphalt or the concrete is similar to an agreement that Mount Pleasant has to do from the asphalt to the flagpole.
So it's incorrect, then, that people have told me that there's an agreement in place that Mount Pleasant does not police the connector, that only we police the connector?
That's correct. They have the same agreement we have.
Okay.
They typically have not been there most of the time. I have noticed that here recently, they've been enforcing on the bridge a little bit more, but they do have the same agreement and the same authority there that we do.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Next item is strategic plan, policy initiatives and priorities. First item is item C, public services, discussion of easement requests from the Isle Palms Water and Sewer Commission for new effluent line through Marina property adjacent to the 41st Avenue ditch. And I know this was talked about at the committee meeting this morning. Douglas, you want to guess?
I will just give a quick high overview, and then we have the representatives from the Isle Palms Water and Sewer Commission that can take over from there, but they are requesting an easement that goes through our Marina property adjacent to the ditch that, that's currently being piped. This easement would be for a new effluent line to go, to take the effluent from, and this is the clean effluent from the plant, clean water that discharges from the plant, ultimately makes its way out to the intercoastal waterway. They have an existing line that's aged, it's across the ditch, and an existing easement for their operations, it would benefit them to move that on this side of the ditch, which, which ends up being kind of roughly along the edge of 41st Avenue, and then it goes, continues straight up and through what I think of as the employee parking lot for the Marina, and then through the new structure that's getting placed at the outfall at the intercoastal waterway. This is Chris Jordan and Mark Yodas, and if you all want to come up and add any information that I left off and answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. I'm Mark Yodas with Thomas &amp; Hunt Engineering. I live in Mount Pleasant, we're all supposed to give our address. I think 77 didn't let track. Work with Isle Palms Water and Sewer Commission, and I'm gonna step back and hopefully just give you a, a kind of a brief overview of why this one particular project is needed, because a lot of y'all probably remember, all the wastewater facilities on the Isle Palms are pretty old. This was put in, this line that takes the treated effluent from the Forest Trails plant at the intersection of Waterway and 41st is over 50 years old. It's about 54, I think it is. And it's, it was, obviously, it's passed its useful life, and it's a material that it's, you know, over history isn't determined, it's not as durable as some of the newer stuff that we have today. So we have a pipe that is, you know, A, it's a little bit small for what we want, and B, it's, it's pretty old, so we're looking at replacing it. As part of an overall process, Isle Palms has, you know, tried to replace the old steel plant that was there. They've done that. It's up and running. It's a better effluent quality, and they're working on replacing the one at Wild Dunes and consolidating everything so it's new, it's more resilient, it's protected better from, you know, natural disasters, because the codes are different, and it consolidates everything, so it's, it's easier for them and less operational problems. So that plant's being built right now, and the next step is to try to get an outfall that we replace this one that's aged. It's a little bit small, but the whole goal is to be able to, if, if and when you ever have to sewer the island, whether that's voluntary or involuntary, means that that is able to be done. And this is part of that process to replace an aged, almost deficient pipe and get something that is for the future. So when the existing line was put in on the, I'm gonna say, as you go down 41st Avenue toward the intercoastal water, left side, on the other side of the existing ditch, that was just like an open field, it was owned by the beach company, they had actually sledged drying beds back there, so it was their property, and they put it in, they didn't really care where it was going. Well, things have changed the last 40 or 50 years. So now it's a lot in the back of people's yards, hard to get to. The easement that's on it is kind of small, so it's, it's, cannot keep the existing line in service and replace the new one. There's just not enough width and there's just too much pack. We want to kind of move it out into a more open corridor, so you ever have to get to it, you're not bothering residents, and it's a place that's maybe inconvenient for traffic for a while, but it's doable. So the goal is to move it over the right side going down, where the ditch is being piped, get it out to the same discharge point, so they're not changing that. And Isle Palms actually secured some grant money to help pay for that, and it's part of that process to be able to treat and accept wastewater for the island for the next, you know, 50, 100 years. We are going a little bit bigger, so it can handle more flow if we need to, but, you know, today, there won't be any more flow, we just want to make sure it's big enough if it has to be, and get it into a place that's accessible. So we need an, actually, the, I'm gonna walk over there, if you don't mind. And I, I left you some earlier today.
Yeah, we have, we have them.
And that's got a little different color coding, but there's colors on here. So in blue is actually property or the line route within the SD DOT right-of-way, so it's an encroachment for them. The green on the right is actually easement on the. Person in the corner. Property, their name escapes me right now, but, you know, it's like where there's a bunch of other lines, the golf cart path for the, the golf course. The yellow is actually the city of Isle Palms encroachment into that 41st Avenue, because they operate that part. And the red is the easement. Now, this red looks awful big, but the easement is the same width as this yellow. In the, in the new drawing, it's color-coded, it's a little lighter, it's a temporary construction easement, because they need a little bit more room for construction. At the end of construction, that goes away, so it's really just the same quarter width. So the encroach easement is just from there to there, which is critical line right now.
And Mark, what's your, what's the timing of putting that line in?
Well, we're, we're starting permitting. I think ideally, we could get permits, assuming this goes forward properly, or if we give agreement, start like after the holiday, end of the summer.
Which one?
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
You know, so we're not doing work during peak season, no tourist traffic. Maybe the boat ramp will be a little bit less, so, but to put it in there, you know, right now, the drainage is going. That should be done not too far off, and the, the goal would be, we kind of like right behind you, so they're not, because they're in the same corridor, but not too far separated, so they, they need room and we need room. So to do it simultaneously, see, would not be that great, it would be one after the other, but the effluent line will go a lot quicker than the drainage line, just because it's a simpler, it's one pipe, not three, I mean, two big ones, and, you know, the soils are probably a little bit better than what's in that ditch. And it would be done, I'm guessing, by, you know, if you started right after September 1st, it should be done by, you know, early February, if not middle of January.
But that doesn't meet with the city's timing, does it, on opening the ditch open? And there's some kind of a, a benefit of having that open, so you want to take advantage of that while you're doing?
Well, there, it's, what we've done is try to take the proposed parking or future parking and looked at the effluent line route compared to that, so it's out of like where it might, a car might be parked, it would be in the driveway, so you could get to it if you had to in an emergency situation, but, you know, you don't have to worry about somebody's car. And that there's no like dumpsters or some other enclosures that are on top of it, so we want to kind of, you know, no vertical things on top of a, a pipe like that is usually the best.
So John, as much sense as it makes to go excavation when it's cut, for whatever reason we've learned over the years, it just doesn't happen that way. So I think the way you're thinking makes a lot of sense, but just in reality, it wouldn't happen where they have one contractor out there, digs one big excavation, puts in all the lines. Unfortunately, there's going to be kind of a series of projects that, and as Mark has said, there's a, probably the sequence would be the drainage project that's obviously happening now, then their effluent line would happen probably next, next winter, so kind of a year from now, and then at some point shortly after that would happen a, the Dominion undergrounding project would happen in the same corridor, and then probably after that would be a parking, a parking plan.
All right, so we have a series of projects.
So it's a very complex little corridor of stuff going on.
I guess another thing on the verb, on the document, and this may be standard language for these things, maybe Mac, but it says, "A permanent water easement for commercial utility purpose over, under, and across a strip of land designated," and goes on. I don't think we want anything over the land, certainly under the land, but I don't know, maybe this is.
Yeah, we're working with their lawyer on, one, an easement, but also, two, an agreement to coordinate this, because this is going to be around the Marina parking lot, want to make sure that tenants don't get up too upset.
Yeah, what was put in your packet is a standard easement agreement, but as Mac has said, he's already in contact with their attorney, and they will, they will tweak it to come up with mutually agreeable language. We hope that'll, that's hinging a little bit on the Dominion engineer who's looking at it now. They're making modifications to try to kind of squeeze it all in. We're waiting for that. Once that comes back, then the next step is for Mac and their attorney to get together and come up with agreeable language. Once all that's done, it would come back to you all. I think we were hopeful that it would happen at your regular meeting. I don't know that we'll make that, but we just wanted to, there's a lot going on here, so I wanted to get it to you as soon as we could.
Okay. Good.
There is also, you all are coordinating so that it would be the, the actual, the wall or where the, where the piping meets the intercostal, that, that will leave a hole in essence for your work, so that the, the big structural things that are being done down there aren't going to have to be torn up and redone, is that correct?
Exactly, and we don't want to go back there and dig next to some nut structure that was just put in there.
Right. So there, so there is a considerable amount of coordination, so it's not like we're going to go back and, you know, ruin all the work that's being done right now. It's going to go next to it.
And we, there is a crossing where the effluent line crosses the proposed drainage.
Yeah.
We've already been talking to that contractor about trying to look at putting that in at the same time where there's one hole, so all that stuff goes in, you know, the effluent line would go down below it, the drainage goes over it, so when it's done, you don't have to go back and, and do it again.
Mark, that's where the blue meets the yellow on that graphic, right?
Uh, yeah, it's actually right around, right in there, not quite to the end of the blue.
Because they're, they're now, I mean, they're pretty close now.
They're going, they're starting at the box on the waterway side of Waterway and going down. It'll be some weeks before they get to.
They get to that one, okay.
And I, I did want to comment on the above ground, that, that's boilerplate, because like, if you did a water system, a fire hydrant is above ground. That's why that terminology is, it will be tweaked, but that's where that comes in.
Okay. I'd just like to say, I've worked on a lot of road projects in my career, and I've never seen one yet where utilities didn't come in right after the road project was finished and brand-new pavement and dig it up. It's impossible to coordinate these, so I'm glad to hear we're trying anyway.
Yeah, and we're working closely with the people that designed the drainage and that contractor. We are already, like, this morning, I had a couple of emails with Pike, who is the consultant for Dominion Energy, about that. So we gave them a, kind of the layout of the proposed parking, the drainage, and the effluent line, and they're moving their transformers, because they'll have some big boxes down there, and, you know, you want them in the islands or places where they won't be in the way, so they're doing that. It's, it's a pretty wide corridor, and it's, you can get a lot of utilities in a corridor that big, it's just a matter of putting them where they need to be.
I have a couple of questions about the way this is going to be done. The effluent line will be between the ditch and the roadway to the entrance to the, to the Marina?
Be honest with you, it'll be down the outbound lane, center of the outbound lane.
Okay, so it will be under the, under the traffic line?
Yeah, because, you know, if you wanted to do anything along that, that ditch side, you could do it, you know, like a vertical structure, trash enclosure, welcome hut, you know, I don't know, whatever, but that, that won't be in the way. So, and if there's a car in the way and they got to get to it, you know, and I could block the road a lot easier than I can move a car.
Yeah, that's fine.
And if you have a problem, then you got to get to it quickly. And if you have a problem, then you got to get to it quickly.
Okay.
Because usually it's, it's the bad stuff that's going out and not the good stuff.
Alright, so the second thing is with the drainage project. We're going to have parking over, over the covered ditch or the, the pipe. Um, will that be paved parking or not?
I don't, I don't think we've gotten to that point yet, but I, I have not heard pavement mentioned there, I think. So I think at the end of this project, it will be just gravel, you know, shoulder of the road, left unpaved. I think there will be a decision time for city council to decide, do you want it paved, striped, paved? I mean, there's a, you know, a lot that could be done there. We haven't settled that yet.
Okay, because we can hold off on that decision, and this may be where the coordination does benefit everyone. Is that if we do not pave until after all of these utilities go in, then we'll only have to pave once and we'll get a good job when we do it.
We could be the first one ever. Pave after.
Well.
I can die happy now.
From, from the effluent line project's perspective, some of the pavement will be tore up. And we're going to pave it back so it's clean. So it'll be better than it is today. But there'll be some damage to that existing, at least half of the lane. But that will be repaired.
Yeah, I understand. It's just not, the new pavement is not going to be drawn if we have it. We're planning on paving part of that unpaved parking lot in the Marina in the future too. So there's, there's a large paving project that's sort of floating out there now. And, um, that can be, that is flexible and that is our, under our control. So I think we've, uh, that's good to know that we can coordinate these things without having to tear up um, and spend money more than once. Scott?
Yeah, last thing, uh, where the dotted line is in the white, that, that is an existing easement, I think, in the back of the, on the property. The residence property. That, with this easement, um, does that go away? I think that, I think you said this morning, it prob, that easement would be removed.
Once the new line is in place and operational and permitted to operate, then there's no need for the existing line. It will be abandoned.
Just stays in the ground.
And the easement won't be needed. Now, you know, it does, see that, there's an easement way up here. And then it gets smaller down here. And that was because of, there was other facilities and then that's why it was granted that way. But yeah, that whole, none of that easement would be needed.
Thank you.
Douglas, I guess the coordination that is happening along with this, I mean Dominion, the plan was for them to bore some of their holes, right? For the underground while we do have it torn up.
Yeah, a lot of their, their underground work will, will happen with boring. So it won't be an excavation. You know, they're pretty destructive even with the boring. They come up, they put the transformers, they have big boring holes.
Same guy who's cutting the trees. Yeah, it's, it's definitely, yeah.
It's not super tidy, but maybe more tidy than a.
So I mean, kind of at that point where we're coordinating where we can, that makes sense. Um, just, just a different timing.
And there are existing drainage lines that go from, you know, Marina side to ditch side that are small. We, that's where we coordinated to avoid those.
Yeah. Chris, anything for the, good at the calls?
Mark seems like he's covered all.
There was one other sort of a side issue about a, um, survey that was done by Water and Sewer.
It's not, it's not on this project.
Okay, so we're not going to talk about that? Okay.
I would like to add too that, that Isle Palm's Water and Sewer Commission has secured a skip grant to fund that and a couple of other projects. And so the, the reason to start, you know, as soon as you can is so you can spend the money before the deadline. Because if you don't spend the money by the deadline, hey, you write the check and it's back to cash, then you, you don't get it. They'll take it back. So there's a finite, there's a deadline.
Very familiar with that, yeah.
We're not going to piddle around with it.
Douglas, anything else?
No.
Other questions?
Now we'll bring it back to you all when it's.
Once we have it finalized.
Yeah, once we have kind of finalized.
Mark and Chris, thank you all. Appreciate the coordination. Next item, no personnel items. Other item for discussion. Item one, discussion of proposed emergency ordinance providing emergency procedures to allow installation of erosion con- control structures. You've got a sample in your packet from our last meeting, staff and Mac. Uh, thank you all, went away and drafted a first shot at the ordinance. So Desiree?
Yes, I'll quick, give a quick overview of where we are and what you have in front of you. As the mayor indicated at your last meeting, the city staff and, and, and city attorney were tasked with drafting an emergency ordinance that would relax our current restrictions on the construction of erosion control structures within two hundred and fifty feet of mean high water under certain conditions. So the ordinance that you have in front of you is the first draft of that effort. Um, and what would allow is property owners to construct either a revetment or a seawall under certain conditions that I'll list in a minute, um, outside of this OCRM jurisdiction. And, um, within two hun, I'm sorry, within two, twenty feet of an existing structure, um, either a home or pool. Some of the other conditions that are included in the ordinance is that the structure be designed by a registered engineer to, um, uh, and certify, designed by an engineer and certify by them that the structure will not negatively impact adjacent lots or down with, dow- downdrift lots. Um, it establishes a maximum height for the structure. It also requires the owner to notify their adjacent property owners or neighbors, um, that they intend to build, um, this structure. Um, it also requires that the structure be covered with beach compatible sand. Um, whenever it is not currently being, um, um, hit essentially or exposed by, by water. And that to the extent that it is possible, that it is, uh, constructed continuously with existing revetments or seawalls, um, um, in the area. Um, this emergency ordinance, uh, as you all know, would be valid, would be in place for sixty days. City council has the ability to extend that for an additional sixty days, um, if so it chooses. And currently the dra, the draft version you have in front of you would cover the properties between one hundred breach inlet to nine fourteen. And this is the area, as you know, that has been experiencing a significant amount of erosion. Um, it, it also includes the properties that are, um, within the project area for the beneficial use project with the Army Corps of Engineers, um, all the way to ninth. And it's the same area that was included in the emergency ordinance that council passed, um, late last year. Allowing the construction of, um, essentially a trench area with a, with temporary sandbox. So we've been consistent in that and, and, and at least the, the location. Council can certainly change the bounds of that area, but that, uh, just explaining what the, what the version you have in front of you. There's some other, um, other conditions in the, in the ordinance. We can certainly go one by one. We have Mac here to answer any questions about the ordinance. And we certainly need to get some direction from, from council. But we were asked to go through, um, sort of a stick man effort at explaining, is it a stick man? Um, effort at explaining, you know, what the OCRM setback line is, the baseline, the maximum building line. And there's all these lines that we've been talking about. And at our last or first meeting, we had with the Beach Ad Hoc Committee, we spent some time articulating that. And I thought it, I think it was helpful. Um, so if, if you all would entertain us to do that, um, before we go into any discussion.
Yep.
Alright.
Sorry, Elizabeth, again, right at your, right at your back.
My only problem is that I'm going to.
Should I, I'll pull it, well.
Is that where you're going?
Defensive practice.
Where are the sticks?
Straw meat.
Where's the straw meat?
So this is not any particular set of houses, pools, property lines. Um, but I would say this is, this is generally, uh, indicative of the southern end of the island. This, when you get into Wild Dunes and the northern end of the island, it's a different, uh, you know, it's just a different set of circumstances. Uh, but this ordinance doesn't apply down there. As, as Desiree has said, this ordinance specifically stops at the nine hundred block. So for our purposes, this, this, um, illustration will work. So just keep that in the back of your mind as you're thinking going forward. This doesn't really apply in Wild Dunes. So the way we've laid this out, we have the road at the top just for orientation. Um, we have the ocean at the bottom. The, the farthest out line that becomes important, uh, to you all is mean high water. So this is a dynamic line. Um, it also creates the southern, or I'm sorry, the C-word most property line for all of these properties. So they technically, their property sizes and dimensions change over time. As, as the average high tide erodes into their property, their property is physically getting, getting smaller. Historically, as you all know, this end has been accretional. So they've, these properties have had the benefit of getting larger over time. Um, so that is, um, that's a dynamic line, um, kind of constantly moving to some degree. Making your way closer to the house, the next line is the OCRM baseline. Um, that is a line that OCRM reestablishes every seven to ten years. They established it most recently in twenty eighteen. Um, this is, so it's, it is a somewhat stationary line. I mean, it doesn't move like the high tide line, um, quickly. But it does, uh, it does periodically move.
Douglas, can I just ask a question before you go off that? It's the mean high water line, right?
Correct.
So by mean, it's, by definition, it's an average. An average over what period of time or what data is it an average over?
So as I understand this, and Stephen Trainum, who lives and breathes this every day, uh, would explain. There is some gray area in terms of that duration that you average. I have always heard that a surveyor, that there is a certain elevation. You know, you take the tide charts and you, you average numbers over a long period. Average is out to about two and a half feet. From my perspective, when surveyors come out and establish these limits, they find that elevation out at the beach. And they know this line is roughly two and a half feet. And that might change, I mean, it, it could, two and a half feet could change that day, and it's still not an average.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to give, it, I don't think it's a, a, another way. The tide level today is at six feet, so it goes out to the high tide level. Tomorrow it's at five feet. So every day though, it doesn't change. It's an average over some period of time is, is the whole point, I think, I wanted to try to get across.
Right.
Yeah, it's, they took, they take it from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and one is the latest one they did. And they say it's a five point one, three foot tide is the average line currently.
It's on a tide chart, which is slightly different from our elevations.
Actual.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a whole nother calculation. But to your point, it is, it's a number that, that changes some over time. Um, and, and in certain places, if it's eroding or cre- creating quickly, it can change rapidly. So OCRM baseline, that's established every seven to ten years. The state sets that line. They have a process, uh, that tells them how to do that. It's slightly different, uh, in the dynamic inlet zones than, than it is in the middle of the island. But I think for this purposes, for this group's purposes, just know that it changes every, every decade or so. Twenty feet inward of that is the OCRM setback line. So it is perfectly parallel to the baseline, just twenty feet in. There are also kind of nuances. In some places, it's not always twenty feet. Uh, there's a, there's a formula that they use that could result in a number different than twenty. But for our intents and purposes, it is twenty in this area that we're talking about. So we've labeled that as twenty.
Douglas, on, on that issue, as I understand it, and just to clarify.
Blair, a little bit closer.
The critical line and therefore the, with the baseline and the critical line have always, I've heard them be called um, historical lines, meaning that that's where the line is for the purposes of this seven year period or whatever. But if you want to do any work on the property, OCRM comes out and establishes the critical line and the baseline on that day. Which is different than the historical critical line and baseline. That's what their website says. That's what the statute says.
So we, we have always understood this, and, and we will talk at the end of this. I'm going to throw a little bit of a, a little bit of a monkey wrench in this, um, with active beach. And when, what's that? So soon. Um, so there, there is some, some changes that happened to this. But for, from our perspective, this is a stationary line. They publish on their website the latitude, longitude of each point along this line. Surveyors pull that information into their equipment so they can go out there on any given day, document it, create surveys that our offices use in the building department for, um. So from our perspective, these are somewhat permanent. We, I have never known OCRM to show up and change in a day a baseline or a setback line. Again, we're going to get to this, um, critical area, uh, beach's critical area.
But I think to that point, I think to Blair's point, the whole, going back to the beginning of why those lines were developed in the first place was exactly to give OCRM jurisdictional authority over. They were there to set the jurisdictional authority for OCRM. Saying, hey, here's, here's a baseline, here's a setback line. In between there's a critical area, but landward of a setback line is, or C-word of a setback line is OCRM jurisdiction. I mean, that was the whole purpose of setting those lines is to, in order therefore to authorize them jurisdiction over the beach.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. These lines definitely create the jurisdiction for OCRM and the state to regulate the area C-word of these lines. I think that's.
And I, I think what Councilmember Hunt is referring to is before any construction or activity happens within that area, the property owner would be required, just like they would be on the back end if they're going to be working on, around the marsh. They're required to get OCRM to come out here and mark what that.
What those lines are.
What those lines are. Not that they change, you know, that day, the day they come out. It's just that it needs to be marked.
Correct.
Yeah, that is in, in the detail of the emergency ordinance in your packet, that they would physically mark it just prior to, to doing some construction.
And again, that is consistent with how we treat permits on the marsh end.
Alright, so we're, still working our way, landward. So you then have this line that's navy blue, um, here. This is somewhat unique to this area of breach inlet, the breach inlet end. Um, you have a maximum building line. You have different lines and different oceanfront properties, different maximum building lines. But for this one, that's between breach inlet and the commercial district, this line was originally created by deed. When they were first laid out, they had an architectural review committee that bound all of these properties to go through. And it was through, handled through the beach company. They would go through an architectural review process. They, this deed controlled where those houses could go. And it was created and included on their plat, on their, you know, on their deeds, a reference to this maximum building line. As time went on, the beach company, they basically had sold all the properties. They got, they wanted to get out of the business of kind of regulating the location of these houses. So at that time, the city adopted their identical line, uh, as a maximum building line. So that's a somewhat uniform line. It's not, from twenty-first to forty-first, it's perfectly parallel to the road. In this section, it's slightly, uh, it, it is, there's some jigs, there's some variation to that as you get, uh, on different parts of that beach. Some places it's closer to the road, some places it's farther. But by and large, it's a pretty straight line. On the roadside of that line, all of the houses are located on the roadside of that line. A, um, pools, however, have been allowed to go on the C-word side of that line. So if you go, if you kind of pull up an aerial, you'll see there's kind of a line, uh, somewhat consistent in the back of the houses. But pools, some are out, some are back. They're pretty inconsistent. And this is a little cartoonish, but it's somewhat accurate in that regard that some pools just got put behind that line. Some are close to the line and some are quite far out from the line. Are they still allowed to be out beyond the, the? They could, they could. Yeah, this, the maximum building line specifically says one pool is allowed, uh, C-word of that line. That's in our code. So continuing the march towards the road. This line is the city's erosion control line. And it is two hundred and fifty feet landward of the mean high water line. So just like we talked about how. So just like we talked about how this line is dynamic, this too, this line is also dynamic. As mean high water comes and goes, this line also comes and goes, so it's parallel and, and moves with the mean high water line. The, I told you the, the, the kind of last bit that does complicate things, in OCRM's jurisdiction is you have this critical area that is dynamic, they call it beach's critical area. It's plural, for some reason it's not possessive, it's plural, beach's critical area. And the way that's administered is if this shoreline comes landward, we're just gonna say hypothetically, that it eroded landward of their baseline, OCRM now claims jurisdiction of that area. So here, where the shoreline is still out from the, their setback line, their set, their jurisdiction stops at their setback line. But in these areas where the shoreline has eroded up, landward of the setback, they now will claim jurisdiction in this area. Cities, the city's 250 feet, it starts at their jurisdiction, and then extends to this line, 250 feet. So our, our ordinance actually does not apply in their jurisdiction. So technically, it begins at their jurisdiction and runs landward of that to a point 250 feet.
Well now, in the area where, where the pool, where we've gotten erosion, does that, I don't know whether it matters about, but the city's erosion control limit, would that also go up into the road? Would it be moved as well for the 250 feet?
No, only if the mean high water mark. So this, they should be kind of correlated, but a kind of shoreline push doesn't really impact the mean high water. From a very layman's term, kind of way of thinking of it, it's where the sand goes from soft, I mean, if you think about, you go over the dune, you're kind of in soft sand for a while typically, until you get to the hard packed sand, that's all land that would be landward of the mean high water mark. Down here in an eroded beach, it's pretty much hard packed, pretty close to the bottom of the escarpment, but sometimes there's a little bit of soft sand at the bottom of that escarpment.
So can you, can I just ask a question, and then maybe refer to Mac as well, because the area you're, first of all, I spent way too much time reading these ordinances. I've read that 33 pages of the state, 49, 38, 10, probably five times, and trying to find, in my own mind, it's, it was confusing at first, but I think I've got a grasp. And the area you're defining there is OCRM's new found jurisdiction is called active beach, I think is the definition, right? And so when I look, and this is what I talked about, you, with you, Mac, about, is if you look at that active beach definition, nowhere in the actual legislation does it give them jurisdiction over active beach. It gives them ac, it gives them jurisdiction over beach, and the definition of this beach happens to be this, what do we call it yesterday, latoral vegetation or periodic wave inundation? So then it revolves around, well, what's the meaning of periodic? Well, you look up periodic, like a periodic oil change or periods routine, and are you gonna call this erosion from Adalia or whatever it is periodic, when for how many years it wasn't? So, my whole point of bringing this up is, I don't know if it's that clear cut that they have jurisdiction over that, which, to get back to my later points of why the city wants to get in the middle of all this, but I wanna make a point that I, I'm not sure that they have jurisdiction over that. At some point, that may be litigated and decided in a court, but, you know, from my personal view, I, I don't know if they do or they don't, but it's, it's a question out there.
Are you blaming it?
Yeah, Mac, what's your?
Yeah, so the statute defines like four cate, four categories of critical area, two of which apply here. One of them, another example in Douglas's scenario is the area from, like typically the dunes would be somewhere in this area here. There was a, there was a dune here as well. And they define the beach dune critical area as the area from the setback line to the mean high water mark. So this area here is what they deem, and people throw around the term active beach, but that's critical area, so that's one of them.
Yep.
The other critical area that they claim jurisdiction over is this area that Douglas was talking about with the pool, and that is, let me read you the exact definition. That is defined as those lands subject to periodic inundation by tidal and waves action so that non-latorial vegetation is established. And so like, what they're looking at, what they would be looking at at this pool is, what's the mean high water mark in this area, which I think it's 5.1 or 5.2, and if this area is getting hit with water at a 4.2 foot tide, that would be deemed to be critical area. I think a common term for that is active beach, and I understand there may be a dispute over that, but the statute's pretty clear, I'm gonna go back to my desk so I can read, or my seat so I can read this, but the statute talks about critical area, it says permits required to use critical areas, and it talks about how OC, how the department is the only state agency with authority to permit or deny any alteration or utilization within the critical area.
But what critical area is that? That's what I'm getting at.
The, the critical area in the statute is defined as.
Is it beach, or is it beach dune system?
It's coastal waters, tidelands, beaches, and beach dune system, which is the area from the mean high water mark to the setback line.
To the setback line, but that's on the others, that's on the landward side of the setback line.
That's right, so that's the, that's the fourth category. So the fourth category is the dune system to the mean high water mark. The other category is anywhere where it's been subject to periodic inundation with waves or water, and there's no vegetation.
Yeah, so that's my point, is, is that now, now there's a, now there's, has to be an interpretation of what periodic means. Is it one storm, or is it over, you know, a repeated, over a period, some period of time wave inundation? In other words, it comes this year, and then, you know, next year it comes, or, or is it once every 40 years, like we've seen here, or, you know, wh, wh, what's the definition of periodic?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the definition of periodic is, I think a one-off storm would be one thing, but in the example I gave, you're, if you have the mean high water mark at 5.1, and at a 4.8 it's hitting the pool, that would probably be critical.
Yeah, and, and all I'm saying is, I don't think we can decide that here. That's my whole point. I think at some point, that will be litigated, and some judge will make a determination of what periodic means, and whether that's, whether that's there or not, but I don't think we can decide that.
Yeah, and, and we don't, we.
The city does not decide critical area, that's OCRM sole jurisdiction, that's why in the statute, they would mark what they deem to be the critical area.
And I guess, so John, does, does it really matter? I mean, to that, to the, cause, cause if you think about, in practice, what OCRM's been doing, I know there's litigation, I know there's things out, you know, to be determined out there, but if you think about what's just been drawn by Mac and Douglas, I mean, I think, I think they, OCRM, would clearly state they have jurisdiction on where that new line is.
Yeah, no doubt, I agree they would, yeah. But what I'm trying to say is that, in this proposed ordinance, we do try to go in and say that, define their jurisdiction by saying that the critical, the active beach, the critical beach.
I think we're taking, I think Desiree mentioned, we're taking all that out.
I hope so, but I.
OCRM jurisdiction.
Yeah, I haven't heard that, yeah, but.
She just said it.
You did? I missed it.
We're gonna, yeah, we, we're gonna change it to critical area as defined in the statute.
Okay.
And take out the active beach term, because that's not even the term that you use in the statute.
I think, I think our intent is to allow, have property owners work out with OCRM where they're claiming jurisdiction on, and then outside of whatever that area is, is where a, a structure would be permitted based on some of the conditions.
So we're gonna take the 20 feet out?
Well, we're talking about the OCRM jurisdiction at this point. I think that our intent and the direction we were given is an ordinance that would allow it outside of the state's jurisdiction as determined by the state, just like we do with other permitting requirements, we have them survey and mark it out, so we would be treating this the same way. And I think there's consensus that that is the path we needed to go, that it would be outside of the state's jurisdiction.
So we'd be putting, basically putting a period after the word OCRM jurisdiction and let them define.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't use the word jurisdiction, because it's, we would just say entirely landward of the critical area as defined in the statute. And then they would, they would mark that line, and the, the way OCRM said it would work was with the setback line, those are coordinates that a normal, just a surveyor can go and mark those, the property owner can get a surveyor to mark those for them. The critical area is what OCRM staff will have to physically come out and mark prior to getting a permit.
Is there any other changes in this language that you're proposing, so we don't have to go down that path, other than that?
So there's a few, I, if, if the group's okay with it, if I could just kind of walk through how we envision, what we think that ordinance says in terms of where you could build it, how an owner would go about getting approval to build it, and then, you know, a lot of this is kind of policy stuff for you all to decide, a lot of it's nuts and bolts that we feel like we could, and I think as Mac and Desiree have already pointed out, there's some, there's some editorial stuff that we, we already think we can clean up. There's, there's duplication in the requirement for a permit, for instance, we, we can strike that. So I think what we were hopeful for is to kind of get a read from you all, kind of directionally, if it's the, if it's the right mix of, you know, kind of represents what you all envisioned, and then let us go back and do some cleanup just on editorial stuff, and then if we need to directionally change based on the policy, we hope you all will tell us that. So I'll just go through how we envision this ordinance working. So, we would measure, or the property owner would, would measure 20 feet seaward of a pool or a house, so in each of these instances, they would measure this 20 feet. We then envisioned a wall could be placed, and it creates the, the downside of this, I guess the negative impact on this, is it's a jagged wall. The upside of it is it's putting that jagged wall as far seaward as we think is possible, which was.
Landward.
I'm sorry, as far landward as we think is really reasonable, there's a, we kind of wrestled with pools, pools are the challenge here, really, they're, these other houses are pretty uniform, they're, they're lining up pretty well with the maximum building line, but these pools are jutting out, so they create a challenge. So, in this situation, you can see I've drawn 20 feet out from this pool, but we know that, or we think, I guess I should say, that OCRM's gonna say they have jurisdiction right up to this point, so in that scenario, the hard erosion control would come right up to their jurisdiction, and then continue down at 20 feet in front of these houses. So it does create a little bit of a jack-o'-lantern kind of look, but that jack-o'-lantern look is also, when the city, emergency orders are triggered, that 20 feet from a house or a pool is when OCRM allows us to start scraping, trucking, putting in sandbags, not, not trucking, but putting in sandbags and scraping. It's when we start expending resources at a pretty rapid pace. We feel like, from a defensible standpoint, it wouldn't be called an arbitrary number, it's already in the state regulations is how they are measuring. So there's some good things about the 20 feet from a structure, there's obviously, it creates this jagged nature, that's, that's a downfall. Elizabeth? Maybe for Mac.
Um, you're drawing those lines with sides, are there sides to seawalls, or is it just more like a bunch of parallel, when you're, you're going up?
Yeah.
Horizontal and vertical.
Correct. Yeah, there's a. Are there perpendicular seawalls? It's just. You know how you're connecting.
Good question, yeah. The ordinance doesn't speak to that, and we had, I don't think it speaks to connecting the walls either.
Yeah, well it does.
It talks about connecting.
Talks about.
10.
10. Continuous with that, with any existing revetments installed on adjacent properties, number 10.
If we were trying to get an objective of contiguous walls, and I, I look at this, and I think we've spoken about it, you're penal, you're sort of penalizing the person that didn't have a pool, so they can, they're only gonna be 20 feet away from their structure, they're, and as far as defining houses, is it where the foundation is defined foundation? Is it where the deck, the deck posts out are, that's another 20 feet potentially, so I'm not sure how we're defining that, but is it possible maybe to take a look at something like this, and would it be equitable to say, if you've got that left hand side there, house plus pool is a certain distance from the max build line? If the max build line is running parallel to the road, are we being equitable if we allowed everybody to take that 20? I'm just saying, draw that line across so that everybody has the same degree of defense or similar degree of defense, plus it gives you the opportunity to make a contiguous wall.
This line?
If you, if you came off the max build line.
Take this measurement and apply it routinely.
Well, take, yeah, take the max build line to the 20 foot line that you have right there, that's, call it 40 feet, whatever it is, so, and take that 40 feet and go across the max build line, you're still way from the, quite a ways from the setback line, so we're trying to retain as much beach seaward as possible. You offer up an opportunity to put together a contiguous wall, and even the ones that, you know, if they're, if they're putting one out, and somebody is not putting one out, at least the ones that are side by side are gonna be more contiguous.
But Scott, what would you, in that example, cause I think this is closely to a real life example, when you take it from left to right, you know, this second pool, you're kind of coming through the middle of it.
Well, I, again, I would, I would probably take the furthest out pool, put that 20, and then, and measure that back to the setback.
From, from the max.
I mean, from the max build line.
Got it.
And I, you know, I think that's gonna keep us still a fairly safe distance from setback, and it's gonna be equitable for homeowner.
And we're assuming that the wall is buried.
Is what?
Buried.
They're always, they're always to be buried, is that's the intention.
In the ordinance.
All right. Yeah, so Douglas, you're, the arrow way there on your left, from the road down, Scott's point is just from the max build line, right?
Uh, yeah, I guess this would be, that's right.
And that's a fairly straight line with the road border, correct, or? Straight-ish.
Straight, yeah, straight-ish.
Scott, one other thought on that too, is, one of the concerns that we've heard is that, let's say OCRM comes out and marks the critical line, and then, and, you know, they were, OCRM was asking us, can we require them to build the wall within seven days? We're like, well, we don't think that's practical through the permitting process and getting contractors, et cetera, but the reason they were asking that question is, if there's more erosion, I mean, there have been some days where the beach has lost 20 feet in one day.
Yeah.
And so, their point is, if, if the critical line moves mid-construction, they, and that area becomes critical area, they may require the homeowner to remove it, and so what, what you're saying is, I was thinking about this last night, potentially we could reverse it, not have the max build line, but just 20 feet from the critical line as marked, so that it buys the homeowner time to install it.
So come, measure this way.
Measure, yeah, and I drew, I know my drawing is showing a lump, but the critical line is fairly straightforward too, with where the tide has gone.
Yeah, so you're talking, you're basically talking 20 foot off the setback.
Yeah, yeah, 20 feet off the critical area, which they, which they would mark, and then, cause what that does is it, it helps the walls be continuous, which is what the coastal engineers say makes them more effective, and two, it protects homeowners in the sense that they're not gonna start building, and then the critical area is gonna be right on, it's far enough back to protect.
As, as long as it gives some distance, it's equitable, I, you know, I just don't think we should be penalizing somebody for not putting the pool beyond their max build line. And I think we, and will intentionally be screwing up the opportunity to have a contiguous wall.
So Mac, you're, you're, again, you're suggesting, sorry Douglas, some number off of the critical line, not the setback, not the baseline, but the critical line.
And, and that's what we did in the sandbag ordinance, that was done for a little bit different purpose, but we had them dig, allowed them to dig the trench and place the sandbags in at 15 feet from the escarpment, because if that escarpment caved in due to excavation machines or whatever else being on it, that OCRM informs that then would become active beach if that escarpment fell and was level with the.
And that's included in this ordinance as well.
So for example, if we've got Curtis and Carla's house that have the, the dune right up against their houses, that, is your critical area right up, I mean, is the critical area right up against the house, and we'd actually be 20 foot into the house?
We, we don't know where the, it depends on where the critical area is determined by the state. We don't know that. We don't establish that line.
It's a movable target.
So, it, it would seem to me would make more sense to come off the max build line and say, 20 feet from the max build line. and say 20 feet from the max build line and not worry about the pools. Well, what everybody's talking about isn't, I want to save my pool. They're saying, I want to save my house, and I want to save the foundation of my house. And you're just retaining walls for the foundation of the house. Well, if that's the issue, let's do that. And doing that would be doing it from the max build line out, pick a number, 20 feet, and, and not worry about the pools, because then you're, you're treating people differently if they had a pool or didn't have a pool and, and, and where the, the, the wall goes. That's a constant line all the way down the beach. And it's easy to know where it is, and we're protecting the houses.
So that would be inconsistent from the state's own threshold that trigger emergency protective measures. So right now, they interpret the 20 feet from the escarpment to a habitable structure or a pool. So that's, that's the current trigger and that's.
I, I understand. For our purposes, if what we're trying to do is protect foundations, max build line, 20 feet this way, you know, out towards the ocean. And then if it's, if for whatever reason OCRM may allow that, then that's fight with OCRM. But anywhere within that 20 foot of the max build line, you can put the wall.
What if we have a home, uh, player that's right up on the max build line?
Well, that, we're going to have that anyway.
Yeah.
Because, because you got OCRN, and we can't fight with OCRM. I mean, the, the, the other issue that we have here is that the law of South Carolina is that you don't put hard structures on the beach. Period. We have all taken an oath to uphold the laws of South Carolina. So that's another issue. But, but the compromise of all of that, I think, is do it from the max build line, 20 feet, be done with it. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, Scott, in your question example, if you're, if the escarpment's all the way back to the max build line, I mean, would OCRM let somebody build something right there? Or who knows? To be determined, I guess.
Yeah, it's all going to depend on what they mark as critical area. And so the, obviously, we can't, we don't have permitting authority in the critical area. And so it would have to be built entirely landward of the critical area, but with no further than 20 feet from the max build line.
Yeah.
Having talked to this, it makes more sense, because critical area lines move and max build line is set in stone.
Now, all my suggestion was is to try to accomplish, make it equitable among the homeowners, try to, uh, you know, make that opportunity for contiguous wall opportunity. And, um, you know, the escarpment one is another situation where if we have an escarpment right now in, in the current way it's written, if it's within 30 feet or less of the pool, we've got to be 15 feet off the escarpment. It's going to put us, the wall in the pool. Yeah.
I, I would say on the, kind of, the scenario that requires a skinny wall, we've kind of, we did think through the sandbag digging and burying sandbags. A wall could be, and we do suspect that people who have little area will drive in steel plates. I mean, that's kind of the skinniest, a sheet piling that's just vibrated down, you know, can be done in six inches. So for those situations, and, and it wouldn't require a excavation, that's probably the skinniest that somebody could do. And we do think that there's going to be some people that, you know, the, the OCRM jurisdiction is right at the back of their house, and their only real option is to kind of drive these sheet pilings down into the ground.
And that's the case, if you, you know, spend some time looking at the beachfront jurisdictional lines from the state's website, take away the erosional nature of what we've seen over the past year. A lot of these properties are already very close to the critical area, to the, I'm sorry, to the setback, to the setback line, which is the one, you know, the, the, the more static ones. So, and, so that's not going to change. And nothing we do will, will change that. But there are some properties that may have more space between that setback and the erosion and where the structure is, and they would have more flexibility. But I think we've, we've struggled with trying to accomplish the contiguous, the contiguous nature of, of what a seawall could look like. You know, if you think about some of these properties, if, let's say this ordinance had not, had not been in place for the last 20, 30, 40 years, and pass that 250 feet, um, threshold that we currently have, if they had installed a seawall, there were, there's not really a, a ton of requirements of how far away from the structure they would have needed to be installed. So even envisioning our current code without that restriction, we would have maybe unknowingly have created a situation where those structures are in a jagged, in a jagged way. There's some zigzag, there's not, it's not contiguous. So I know we're trying to solve that now because of the current condition, and that's the advice. But if you look at it, you flip the coin, we'd probably be in that position anyway.
As a policy matter, which I, I guess that's what we're trying to do here, if we don't set it off the max build line, it also encourages people in the future to build pools and other structures and pickleball courts or whatever as far out as they can, so as to get more land. Because that's where they can then put their, a, a, a revetment of some sort. So again, it depends what we're trying to do. And if, if the purpose of this is to protect foundations, then some distance off the max build line, to me, is the policy thing to do. And then all of the walls will also line up. Well, I don't think this is to get more land or to take more land. I think that's the issue. But I think, I, I had to step back a little bit from, from this and at a higher level. And if you allow me just to kind, make a few comments, because I've, I've talked to a lot of people, including at the Beach Advocates Group and cornering a few experts. But I think there, first of all, some may have a confusion around this. I don't, I haven't talked to anybody that doesn't think that, or does think that hard erosion control structure should be the face of our beach. I mean, absolutely zero. And these, uh, these, uh, you know, I think everybody believes that a, a robust sand dune beach system is best for wildlife and plant life and visitors and everybody to enjoy the beach. But the fact is that we are seeing a lot higher sea level. Sea level's up six inches. We can talk about the reasons all we want. By 2050, they expect to be up another foot, which means what we saw on December 17th is going to be more and more common practice for us. And so it's an existential issue for us, and I think that we're having to set policy here on these. And what we're talking about, the change tonight, is simply to allow homeowners to protect their own property, to put in case of a catastrophic event. So these structures that we're talking about will never be seen under normal conditions. It's when we reach a catastrophic event, then it's in prop, the property's there. And to me, what, I think the current beach management, uh, policy is, is unsustainable. We don't allow property owners to protect their property, so the city steps in. We scrape, we haul sand all hours and night and day for months at a time and attempt to, to protect the property. Then we spend millions of dollars doing beach renourishments, of which the costs are going up and up, and have shorter and shorter lifespans. The one we put in that's expected to last 15 years is now 10 years. So we'd have to spend another $20 million in, you know, in a five-year shorter period of time than we thought. Sand is getting harder and harder to source, as we found out from the Beach Advocates Group. And most interesting, there's no funding from the state or the federal level to help support us. So to me, what I think this ordinance is, is the first step in a needed policy change. I think we need to make it clear that private property protection is responsibility of the property owner. But to do that, the city has to get out of the way. We have to allow them to protect their property. The city and the state need to focus and be responsible for the management of the beach and the dune system. I'm really optimistic that this beach management committee that we put together would be the catalyst for change in South Carolina and be the innovators, because we have 1980 technology in 2024, when things have drastically changed on our beaches. We need to bring in new thoughts from experts like this Paul Gales from Coastal Carolina University, who's a great expert with some very innovative thoughts. We need to relook at the practice of massive costly renourishments to look at more constant and frequent micro nourishments. They're all ideas that this guy has. But as far as the ordinance goes, I think, as I said, the city needs to get out of the way. And, and I don't think that the proposed language that we has, that does that. I think in this section that we should entirely eliminate it and allow homeowners to do what they want up to the OCRM's jurisdiction. So if it's 20 feet from it, that's fine. If it's 100 feet back, that's fine. But it should be between the homeowner and OCRM to determine where that jurisdiction is, and landward of that, they should be allowed to do what they want to.
But John, I don't disagree with a lot of that, but tonight, all we're talking about is an emergency ordinance. Some of this is a part B conversation. You know, a 2.0, once we look at the 250 setback or broader, broader beach management conversation. You know, that's why, to me, tonight, to your point on a policy decision, you know, let, let's decide what we can all get comfortable with, to allow homeowners to do what they need to do and get the city out of the middle. You know, as opposed to trying to solve.
I do agree that it is a temporary, but I, my understanding, some of the costs that, uh, I've been told of these things are pretty expensive. And we're putting hard, you know, you are putting structures there that it's hard then to go back, you know, 60 days, 90 days. So I always say, hey, we changed our mind, it ought to be. I think what we're doing has some pretty big impacts to the beach to be able to change every 60 or 90 days. And I think that's why we ought to be very thoughtful around what the long-term, what this looks like long-term.
What we tried to sort of accomplish by this, because, oh, what we tried to accomplish with this is to try to allow some flexibility, but at the same time, the coastal engineers were telling us, you know, continuous walls are more effective. And in this example here by the pool, the person that's tucked back away 20 feet is going to, all the water that hits that first wall that's further out, it's going to go rush up and hit that second wall and cause problems for that owner. And so we tried to sort of balance private property, do what you want, but also don't set your wall up so far out that it knocks your neighbor out.
But I think that's all things that engineers can help design around, right?
You need coordination with your neighbors, Blair.
We're creating civil war. One more fly in the ointment. It is an equal protection issue. By us only doing this on this small part of the beach, instead of extending it to everybody, so that the people in Wild Dunes or anywhere else can do the same thing if they've got an issue. It seems to me that we would want to do that.
So, oh.
Let me just say this real quick, because I, because there's so many lines up there now, it's going to be hard to make this comment. But if you, you know, I think Blair, if you, if you go down to Beachwood, Dune Crest, that area, you know, the setback and baseline are above the road.
Yeah, which is a reason to use the max build line, or.
But they don't have that. They built in the critical beach area.
Because OCRN's going to say you can't do it, well, it's out of our hands, other than we can do.
Okay.
But, but there are going to be, there are going to be places where you could put something in after your max build line, and it would not be in OCRM jurisdiction.
I'd suggest that we start with this, and if it works here, we can extend it further.
Just from a legal perspective, I don't want us to, you know, a constitutional issue of saying that we're treating people differently, that's all.
Yeah, I think, and the purpose of this is to deal with the emergency situation at Breach, but the, the part B, as the mayor said, would be to institute something like this island-wide for all the beachfront residents.
Well, and any changes, as we've said before, you know, throughout the, the meeting, this is an emergency ordinance that is good for 60 days, and we would need to make, to work concurrently during that timeframe to make any of those changes permanent. And at that time, you decide you want to rip the Band-Aid off anywhere outside of, outside of jurisdiction, across the island, with the exception of those areas that we've said that the line is behind the road. But this was our effort to understanding the urgency of the situation and the critical nature of the situation that we have at Breach Inlet, how quickly can we get some relief to these property owners while we go through the, the regular process to, to change the ordinance permanently?
Well, and I just, you know, this ad hoc committee that we've just put together, I don't want to hamstring them with something that they may come back with longer term. So, I mean, I, I just think we need to be careful with putting a volunteer committee together and kind of dictating to them what we think we want. But, um, go ahead, Scott.
No, I was just going to say, I think, you know, my suggestion was, and I think we're close, Blair, on this discussion on the setback, was to just, to make this equitable and to ensure that everybody that does have the pool can be protected. The setback line's going to dictate it anyway. But, um, if we could find out, I don't think it would be that hard, how far from the setback line is the furthest pool out, and then add whatever we're adding to 20, 25 feet from an engineering perspective. And that would be the, that would be the outward limit for where, and during this emergency ordinance, right now, somebody could put the pool, I mean, put the, uh, put their wall.
And Scott, why wouldn't you come, why wouldn't you come off the max build line? That seems to be a.
What did I say? I meant the max.
Okay.
Yeah, I meant, but, but measure, measure that, what, however that furthest pool is from the max build line. Take, add your 20 feet, that's your, if it's 80 feet, if it's 100 feet or whatever, then everybody along that emergency stretch right now is at least, you know, if we're not going to, if we're not, don't have the appetite to take it to the setback line, at least give them the opportunity to get, uh, the furthest out, and then everybody's equitable, and we have the opportunity to make a contiguous line.
I think, I think the problem with that is that. I feel like that the problem is, we're going to reach there is, if you look at the map with the lines on it, the state's jurisdictional lines, is that we've got, we've got line, it's, it's my problem. The, the setback line touches at least three pools. So.
Already?
Right.
And that's not the erosion, it's, that's just a setback.
That's the one that was drawn in 2018. So.
Yeah, that's the, that's the challenge with that, the pools are already at it.
So that's where the pools, the pools are, a number of these pools are already too far out. And so if we're going to, I, I feel like the only thing that we can, the only way that we're ever going to possibly have a line that's straight, which engineers say a lot of different things about seawalls. But, um, the one thing I feel like is consistent is that they need to be consistent.
They're like a good economist or a attorney. On one hand, you got this, on the other hand, you got that.
I'd like to suggest, and I'll, another way to look at this, I like the idea though of using the maximum build line since that is already drawn. But if we cannot come to agreement on that, many of the houses out there do have pools. And if we used that as a way of setting up the limit for a structure, a seawall or, or revetment, I think it's I-10, says seawalls and revetments shall be designed so as to be continuous with all existing revetments installed on adjacent properties. I'd say existing or planned. Where what you can do then is if there is a house with a pool next to, just like here, next to a, a lot without a pool, and then another lot maybe with a pool or even not, that you could use the lot, uh, pool adjacent to sort of line these, these walls up. And the part that I looked at between Breach Inlet and, and third, and Fourth Avenue, I think, all but one lot has either got a pool or is pool adjacent, you know, the next door neighbors. And that way, you can get a contiguous line without penalizing anyone who doesn't have a, a pool, and make an exception for that one lot to have, to, to go on.
Is there, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for this, I'm, I'm actually just kind of asking this out of curiosity, but is there a possibility that OCRM would allow a wall of some sort on seaward of the baseline? Because if you look at this map and you go up to Wild Dunes, they allowed a lot of houses to be built there. So, I mean, i- is that?
That's history.
Yeah, they kind of, oddly enough, will allow you to build a 5,000 square foot house, but they will not allow you to build a pool or a wall.
Okay, that makes sense.
You mean in?
That's the, that's the Lucas case. I mean, they had to unlatch use of the property and that, they got it there. It's kind of as, as small a crack as they could do to say, you can, you can use your property. You might not have a wall, you might not have a pool.
How close to the setback line can you build a pool?
In, anywhere, right now. And, and, yeah, outside our, in.
Yeah, if you're compliant with the zoning, I mean, kind of zoning aside, they would allow, allow a pool right up, you know, inch, an inch from the setback line.
What's to prohibit somebody from building a fortified, I mean, a pool could be the wall. Yeah, I mean, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying it's a little bit ambiguous that we've got, we, we, we allow a structure that could act as a barrier right up to the setback line, yet we're having an issue with allowing it.
Yeah, we have, so with the 250-foot ordinance, we have stopped, I mean, we have definitely seen people building a seawall incorporated into a foundation, and we have not allowed that. Or a pool, a house foundation, and, and we have not allowed it.
Stephen did point out if there is a pool, and like, let's say that this, my mic is the pool, and there's two walls on either side of the property, that you could run walls just up to the side of that pool, and that the pool would essentially act as a seawall and a barrier, and that you, that potentially, he's not an engineer, like, uh, like, uh, civil engineer, but that potentially could be effective as well, he said this morning.
Yeah, the wall winds pool didn't, we have two pools and couldn't, couldn't tolerate it.
So are we coalescing to come off the max build line to some extent to create some consistency?
I think you heard my preference, it certainly is better than what's in here, but it's.
When again, this is just for the emergency ordinance to get us over a hump. And then at that point, we'll have the Army Corps project and hopefully we can see how that's going to affect life in the next couple of months.
Then the other question is if we're going to use the max build line, I think there's discussion that at the state to extend that distance from, from the.
It is discussion at best.
Okay.
I'd be interested to see, yeah, I'd be interested to see, I know we've got three at the setback line, but how far out some of those examples would be, if we're going to use the max build line, how far out that might be from, how much that, how much that would cover some of these properties?
And say, so say that again, what, you, you want to get to the max?
What I, what I was suggesting, I think Katie said that you, we've already got some pools out at the, already out at the, uh, out at the baseline or the setback. You know, where, where would some of these pools that are not at the, at the setback, how far out would that put, um, put it from the max build line?
When we're talking about pools, are we talking about pools attached to habitable structures? Or are we talking about pools that are in ground and just happen to be in front of these?
I was suggesting in ground.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, yeah. In my mind, I'm thinking in ground, but I'm not sure that I'm, I want to make sure I'm tracking with what everybody else is thinking.
Goes to the example on the, the outward pool there that's not at the setback, how far, how, if you take twenty feet or twenty-five feet from an engineering standpoint from that pool, how far is that from the max build line? That would be interesting to know how far, is that, is that a workable number?
Here you go, Scott, we're putting it out.
I didn't, I didn't know you could do it right now.
It's around second.
Second.
The two hundred block.
Uh, yeah, there's another one there.
Yeah, there's a.
Here, you know, the first home already is prob, pretty much half of, half of the home is already in the setback between the baseline and the setback. Second home is really close, you have some of the properties down this curve, and then you see that setback line.
And that blue to red is twenty feet, so that kind of gives you an idea, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, for scale, for scale purposes, that's twenty feet.
So the max build line is now disappeared is what you're saying? When that, when that house was originally built, if the setback's now in the house, then it's eroded down there.
That's right.
Here we see, you know, some of the homes built farther, farther back, may have some, some space. And then it goes, goes out.
Where are you now, Desiree?
Seven.
And how long ago was this picture taken? Because that's probably changed.
Yeah, I mean.
It's definitely changed, obviously the conditions there are much.
That's the middle of the four hundred block.
Right here.
And then you get closer to Front Beach, our commercial district. And it starts creeping a little bit back in. These houses are already right at the setback. So this is, yeah, we're, this is ninth. Ninth is right here, you see my cursor moving? And then here's ten, so the, the emergency ordinance would cover up to ninth. I mean, I, I think that there.
Hey, guys, can we bring the conversation back in?
I understand the goal of, of wanting to keep these structures as landward as possible. They, they tend to serve the structure better the closer it is. I think the reality of, of the condition on the ground, I mean, we can, we can look at these drawings all day long and look at this structure and look at the, um, the picture before last year's erosional cycle, it's much different. I don't know if properties even, some properties may not even have twenty feet. So I don't, I, I, I understand what we're trying to solve with the twenty foot, keeping it landward. I just think it's going to be very difficult in, in practical terms to keep it contiguous and, you know, it. I don't know what the.
Unless we just do twenty feet off the, or thirty feet, whatever it is, off the max build line. And then we also have the issue of beach paths, because that will exacerbate beach paths. And so I think we got to come back to, what are we trying to do here? What's the point? Is the point to just protect everybody's property as far out as possible? Or is the point to, to give somebody the protection of their house and their foundation? And, and what I've heard and what's actually been in the news is that we're just trying to protect foundations. Well, if that's the case, then I think we need to tighten it up. And then we don't have all these other issues. And God willing, we don't have the, the walls even being shown most of the time. But it's there for hurricanes, it's there for a bad storm. And the, you know, the pools are sacrificed and that's unfortunate, but that's just the way it is.
So the, the idea though, so I understand it is, it'd be twen, they could go as far out as twenty feet from the max build line. It could be closer though, like if, for example, if a certain residence, the critical area is creeped up in there and OCR marks it at ten feet, they'd have to build their wall at ten feet.
Whichever is further landward, either twenty feet out from the max build line or OCR.
And that's at least manageable then.
So what about properties that have the pool attached to the structure?
Still a foundation, still a max build line, wherever that max build line is. You know, the property owner might have to make a decision.
Ignored pools, or pools ignored the max build line, I think is a better way of saying that.
That's correct.
Is that just in-ground pools or like if they have a deck that has a pool, that would be within the max build line? Okay.
So if you're elevated in a deck attached, you did comply with the max build line.
Correct, yeah. I don't think I'm clear on the direction we need to take, and I know that's the challenge with workshops.
I mean, I think we're max build line plus something.
Some, some.
Sounds like, I mean, it sounds like we're.
Yeah, I'd like to see how far these pools are out from the max build line. I mean, I think that's, the max build line isn't drawn on there.
But they don't matter.
Which ones, and then what do you, what's your decision point?
Say that again.
So which, which pools do you want to see? You can see they're all over the place, so then you figure out there are five feet, twenty feet, eighty feet, a hundred feet. So then what does that do to us from a decision point?
Well, then that gets to the whole trying to get the contiguous line. If, if, you know, right now, we're saying we are going to, we are going to allow twenty feet from the pool. What I was trying to solve for was the inequity of somebody that didn't have a pool. And I think what we're saying now, we're backing it up to twenty feet from the max build line. And we've had the pools over the max build line, we've just sacrificed all the.
Pike, we have to do that, otherwise we're going to have nothing but seawalls all the way down that end of the beach. Because you're going to build it out as far as possible, which is the furthest pool. And then everybody's going to hook up with that and we're just going to have seawall all the way down the beach, which.
Well, or you're not going to have any because OCRM's not going to let you put them there.
Right, right, exactly, yeah. We don't, we don't know that, we can't.
I mean, I think that the best chance of getting it built is the max build line.
Best chance from an OCRM.
From a, yeah, from a realistic, you know, what's actually going to happen, I.
Get those vibrating panels down there.
As I've, as I've said before, it would be really nice to have an OCRM person.
At the discussion.
Point out, you know, where this is where we can do this and this is where we can't.
I think there's just a whole lot of questions still to be answered for, you know, if you're looking for direction from council, you know, I think there's just, I have more questions now than I did when I walked in.
Well, clearly seems like the sticking point is, should the ordinance be completely silent in the location of that structure as long as it's outside of the state's jurisdiction? Or we want to dictate where that wall could be built in which would, in what would be the city's jurisdiction? I mean, ultimately, that's the, that's the question.
If we were trying to extract ourselves from this and let OCRM decide, then we'd go with being silent on it.
Yeah, and if you, to that point, if you look at where the line is, I mean, there's pretty limited opportunities to land grab somewhere. I mean, you're, you're going to, you're going to be pretty, pretty tight end.
But I mean, one of, one of the main reasons for the, for us as a city acting on this and being, being involved is to ma, to make it as effective as possible. Because I think we, we can all agree that a continuous seawall would be the most effective. If you leave this strictly up to the property owners, you're not go, there's no way you're going to have a straight wall. So I think if we look at this as like, how can we do the best for all of the property owners and the city as a whole, we have to come up with some line that's going to, to the most possible get a straight, continuous line. Is that, I mean.
I, I, I don't know about that because there's no, there's no guarantee. We can't force homeowners to put this in. One homeowner may do it and five, next five may not do it, and then two may and another one may not. There's no, no way we can ensure a contiguous, uh, line of this. And that's why the city needs to get out of it, allow the homeowners to do what they want, work with OCRM to say, where can I build this thing? And let them build what they want to build as long as it's a stead, it meets all these other engineering requirements and grade levels and all that. But the city needs to get out of it.
Which gets us back to setback.
Work with OCRM. I think, as Philip said, there's no, there's hardly any room there to begin with. You can see where the setback line is and we're already landward of the setback line with the erosion. So, I mean, I just don't know what we're trying to fight here over feats and we're trying to be so prescriptive around where we want to set these things.
That would bring us back to the setback line.
Where, no, it's going to bring. Wherever OCRM says they can build it, they build it.
The new wavy line over there that.
Just an idea, if, and Matt will kill me for suggesting this idea, but if we were to take a measurement of every pool that's out past the max build line, and then we, we set a distance from the max building line that would accommodate ninety perc, let's just say the number is ninety percent of the pools. Set the line at ninety, the, the pool distance average at ninety percent and then allow those remaining ten percent to have a bulge for those pools that existed when you enacted the ordinance. So it would be generally straight. Some ten percent of the pools would have a bulge around them that we, that we would allow. We'd set, that might be that super skinny, um, bulkhead, you know, vibrated down. But give some amount to allow them to provide protection. Is that?
Maybe we should take a look at that, I mean, that's, that seems equitable.
You could require the homeowner with the bulging pool to actually connect with the, the barrier on either side of their home.
And you could require him to do that.
And I think to John's.
It hits, it hits back to the line on each side.
If, if. If being contiguous is important, I think we would, well, we'll also have to overlay, I guess we have the, the wrinkle in there of not knowing some of the beach jurisdictional lines of OCRM in the middle of that computation. So we'd have to write it so that it's either that line or OCRM's jurisdiction, whichever is farther landward, which it kind of gets back to the jaggedness a bit.
Well, and I, I think we're kidding ourselves personally if we think, how many homeowners are between one hundred and nine hundred? Hundred?
Yeah.
I, I, my bet, we should have a pool, not a pool, money pool, that. I bet there's not going to be ten people take advantage of this.
All Matt's hard averaging work.
Yes, yep. And, and I, but again, I think the, the people that want and can, will, and I think others are going to take a chance on the Army Corps project that's going to come in in thirty, forty-five days, pick a number. But for those that want to, we would be giving them the opportunity to do that. Go ahead, Desiree.
I just want to know, if, is the expectation, if the city passes some sort of ordinance relaxing this current restriction to give the homeowners more flexibility to do something to protect their property, is the intention or the expectation that the city will continue to come in during an emergency condition to those property owners that elected not to do anything? And the erosion is coming to a point where it's threatening that property? Are we still in the business of serving as the first line of defense? We are hoping that this Army Corps of Engineers is contracted this month, executed, we have a notice to proceed, and that'll allow us to buy some time. Part of the challenge we are having is this has been literally the only thing we're dealing with for the last six, seven months. And it is unsustainable.
I think we have to continue to go on through this Corps of Project, but it's what I said earlier. I hope this is the first step of a policy change where those lines become very clear. Where homeowners are responsible for their property, we're responsible for making sure the beaches are nourished and sound. And I think we can't do that like right now, but certainly I think that's a policy change that the city needs to entertain and, and in my opinion, move towards. But this is the first step of it.
I guess I'm concerned because the city spent a lot of time developing an emergency ordinance last year that was not, was not, nobody took advantage of that. And I know that was not perfect, we're trying to do a measured approach. But I would hope that property owners give, being given the opportunity, do, do take the opportunity to, to protect their property.
And I think we need to give it to them and let them, and it's up to them.
Sure.
But I, I do agree with the mayor and I think that, you know, there's going to be a lot of number that do. So to think we're going to have some big continued contiguous wall and it's been a lot of effort trying to build something contiguous, it's not going to be contiguous. And I think the city just needs to get out of the way, let them do what they want to, work with OCRM. Where's, where can we build it if we want to build it? And then that's where they build it.
I'd like to say something, my, my whole theme seems to be community these days. This is where. Okay. I say it out loud. This is where I think our responsibility as, as a council needs to come in. Because if everybody does what they want and you end up with a zigzag of, of, of structures out there that are totally ineffective because they don't line up and they don't link, then where are we? We're back to protecting everyone the way we do now. So it is to, to the benefit of the entire community if we can come up with some sort of a way of giving guidance to our community as to what is the best way to do this so that what you're doing is most effective and not ineffective. So that's where I think we need to decide and not just let everybody, you know, do whatever they think is best. I mean, we've had some people out there already try to, to do their own thing and it's been ineffective. So we can't, I think what we're asking for is we're, our community, the residents are willing to spend significant amount of money to protect their property. But we need to have, give them guidance as to how to do it to be most effective so that they and their neighbors will benefit from it. And I think it's happening with a couple of groups already out there. And we just need to make sure that what we do helps, um, make it as consistent as we can.
Jimmy.
Just a question. Doesn't OCRM have jurisdiction over all this anyway?
Up to that blue line.
Right.
So, and we're talking about the area inside that blue. On the TV screen, yeah.
Plus, potential active beach.
Right.
Yeah, plus that dune system there, it wouldn't you build anything over the dunes.
Which, kind of back to this, some of this whole conversation, that active line, right now, let's draw an orange line, it's all over the place.
All right.
Today, I mean, it's kind of back to John's, I think I heard you say, the city needs to get out of the middle?
Yes.
You know, I, I came in here tonight thinking something off the max build line would make sense, something off the, one of the OCRM lines makes sense. But listening to all this conversation and, and discussion, I'm kind of getting where John is to some extent. I mean, the line, when you look at. kind of getting where John is to some extent, I mean, the line, when you look at real life, there's not that much area. There's a third line that's not even up there yet that the OCRM's gonna come in and draw whenever some resident wants to do something. So why don't we just get out of the way?
Right.
And let the OCRM go out there and stake it.
They've got ultimate jurisdiction from that line, right?
Yeah, and I, and like I say, I was not there at all walking in here tonight, reading, reading it, talking to residents, talking to other council members. But again, when you look at it practically, if you overlaid the new line, it's, there's not much room.
Agreed.
Give a recommendation to, to staff at this point, or are we not there yet?
Blair's got something to say.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but what you just said, Mayor, that, that supports what Jan has said, what Elizabeth has said, which is, we have to have a uniform line. And to have a uniform line, it has to be far enough back to be able to do that, and that's why you come off the max build line. And some people might not take care of it, but that creates the uniform, and might not take advantage of it, but that creates a uniform line. It's better, it's better than having a hodgepodge. And if we just leave it with OCRM, there's gonna be a hodgepodge.
Yeah. Ashley, go in. Get the mic, please.
I mean, I just. That's okay. Uh, you know, I'm just kind of listening to all of this, but I mean, are we not concerned looking five, ten, forty years down the road? If we do let people put in these walls or revetments, um, and maybe some participate, maybe some don't, are we not concerned about what that does to our beach down the road? Have an engineer provided any insight into that aspect of it? Just curious.
And, and I guess the, I mean, to the root of that question is pushing it back was the original suggestion. We.
Towards the house.
Towards the house. I mean, that was the goal that we were trying to meet, is put it as close to the house as possible. That, that is the contrary position to just putting it at OCRM's jurisdiction, wherever it may be. And I mean, that, that picture shows, let's just say hypothetically, you see the, you know, you see some vegetation on a dune there. If that becomes stabilized, there is the possibility that a seawall would go right at that blue line. So it gets exposed sooner. It's in the water at additional tide, so to the public's access, getting around that is being bifurcated by a wall. So that's the devil's advocate position of why you would not just say, put it at OCRM's jurisdiction and, and stop. And that was kind of, we tried to, to thread the needle between what the coastal engineers advised, is put it as far landward po- as possible and give some ability to do something. So it's, and there, there definitely is not a perfect, each of them has a compromise. I mean, you can kind of create a matrix of pros and cons. Farther seaward limits the public's ability to get around it. It is exposed more. You know, there's reasons not to do it. Putting it farther landward is potentially getting it out of the, getting the city out of the middle of it more so than we have been. So there's pros and cons to wherever you all choose to put, to put the line.
Douglas, I guess, if you think about the blue and red line on the screen right now, you know, in normal years where that area is accretion, is accreting, right? That would be reality.
That photograph.
That photograph would be.
Which probably about twenty sixteen or seventeen.
Right. But again, if we, whatever we decided tonight, if we said OCRM line, is going to be significantly inside of that blue line and probably a hundred percent of the cases would be my guess.
The new line, the current real line that they're gonna flag is probably gonna be landward.
Of the blue line, and, and a hundred percent of the cases, I'm guessing.
And actually, this ordinance is only, well, all the way up tonight, it, it may not.
May or may not up there.
As you get closer to the commercial district.
Yeah.
May or may not be.
And that line, as Douglas indicated earlier, it's reestablished every ten years.
Right.
And by established, that line can't go seaward. It's only gonna continue to move landward. If, if it moves, it only moves landward.
So, I mean, that's why, but I mean, I do think.
They could stay still.
Yeah, they're redoing it this year.
Yeah.
They're starting.
But I mean, so to Ashley's point of, because that's something I've been asking.
One, one, one talk at a time.
I've been asking myself this a lot, is ten years from now, what are we going to say? Are we going to say this was a bad decision or a good decision? And.
Guys, can we keep one conversation going?
Think that you, we do need to think about that because, you know, the state in some ways has put us in this position in the first place of allowing construction where they've allowed it. They've now said that we're not in a retreat, we're in a protect, but they're not funding the protection that we need. They're not funding the beach re-nourishment. So now we're saying, and then there's the sea level rise a- aspect of things. But there's also the fact that we've known for a very long time that this is unstable beach and, but we've built here. And so we're stuck in a really between a wet place and a hard place. And I've watched videos of houses falling into the ocean, and it's awful. And that's not a good environmental situation either. And so I, I mean, honestly, I, I feel like we are in a, a very, I, I can't come up with a good, I think that's why we're all sitting around here trying to talk about twenty feet and lines and whatever, because we feel like that's gonna give us some sort of right answer. And I, I'm having a really hard time coming up with a right answer. Kind of like Katie, but, and this, forgive me, this sounds silly, but I mean, is it completely impossible to either somehow get funding to put seawalls or, I mean, you know, or just require that everybody?
Finish that with a straight face.
I know, right. She laughed at me before I finished it, so I was like, that's done. I mean, I don't know, I just, you know, I'm struggling with, I mean, you know, we allow seawalls or revetments, you know, and they're all jagged or some do them and some don't, even if they're all along the same line. You're still, I think, looking at exacerbated erosion and potentially loss of beach down the road, which has a larger, you know, negative effect.
It's clearly a balancing act, right? In, in this moment, I guess the, the, the biggest threat is the threat that these properties are having with the erosion. And the fact that at this point, we're only limited in what we can do to address that. We are working with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we're hopeful that this project will, will help stabilize that area. We have coastal engineers under, under contract looking at alternatives for that area for a long-term solution. So I think our long-term plan is to ensure that we have a plan in place to maintain that area as a stable area. Stabilize it and maintain it that way so that we don't see this condition happening time and time again. Because we are in this critical erosional cycle that we have not seen before, homeowners feel like they're, they're unable to do what they could to protect the integrity of, of their homes. And that's not something that we can do, as you know. So that's a conundrum. I think overall, everybody wants to maintain a healthy, dry sand beach, that's our goal. But in, I think at this moment, the biggest threat we have is having homes falling into the ocean. And that's another, that's another public safety concern, another public, there's no public access at that point where houses are in the middle of the beach.
Yeah. I mean, so basically, we're just essentially going to let people, you know, do the revetment or wall or, and wherever we decide that to be or, or whoever decides it to be, but we're essentially just saying, yes, you can do this, and we're hoping to never see it ever again because we're going to keep maintaining the beach, and we're gonna look at policy and redo some things and, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think long-term, certainly.
Re-look at the, um, Beach Re-Nourishment Fund, like wording and.
Correct.
When that kicks in, because I think you mentioned earlier a good point. What's the expectation moving forward from?
From an emergency perspective.
And just all of Isle of Poms, I mean, you know, what, what's fair?
Correct. I think in an emergency condition, we saw how detriment, you know, we had two storms in August and in December. And, you know, we, we, we will be, we will experience storms in the future that, you know, just like we saw in Wild Dunes, we had a fifty million dollar project in twenty eighteen. And look at the condition of the homes at Beechwood East, even when we've done two projects down there. So I, I think there's no guarantee. But the city establishing a consistent program for re-nourishing the beaches which we have in the areas that have needed it is, it's part of the plan, but we can't guarantee what, you know, we, what we saw in twenty twenty-three was unprecedented.
Scott, real quick.
Last comment. You know, I, if there is an appetite for getting out of the way, I, that's my, that is my preference. And I do believe that we've got a situation where we're gonna have, the funding isn't coming from the state. So we're just gonna have this exacerbate over the next several years with the conditions. And we're on our own. I think that's gonna be the, the sad reality of it. So, yeah, my, you know, if we're looking at some direction, my preference would be to, for us to get out of the way.
I'm thinking, I'm, I'm trying to make sense of what we've talked about today. The one thing I think that's most critical is to protect the houses that have had the greatest erosion to the, to the, to the yards, and that they are within twenty feet of the house already, the erosion, the escarpments. So I think that's our first order of business, is to make sure that those homes can do something to protect themselves. Beyond that, the other homes at least have some time that they don't, if we don't, if they don't act today, then there may be time later on to do something else. By taking Blair's suggestion and use the, the the maximum build line as our limit, then ten years from now, if we look back, we can say at least we protected our structures, even if we've lost other yards, yard erosion, beach erosion and things like that. There's a good chance there could be another cycle. This, this seems to cycle, and we won't be, it won't be as critical, but who knows with?
That max build line is there for a reason.
Yeah.
The reason why they put that max build line there, because they were saying, this is the part that you want to build, don't build past this.
Yeah.
That was the reason for it.
And the flip side is what's hap- what, what's happened at Beechwood East, which is they built where OCRM said houses should not go. The homeowners brought it to court and got it overturned. But OCRM, you know, still said houses should not be there. So they did what they, they could. It's not what I think we want to encourage is for people to, to build in areas where they're, they're most liable for damage. We can't, we can't afford to protect those kind of homes. It's just too expensive.
So, sounds like kind of winding down, and I think that we have, I think we've heard clearly, there's an idea of just getting totally out of it, letting OCRM draw the lines, and we can certainly draft an ordinance to that effect. We have this kind of the jagged twenty feet when it meets the trigger. Is there any other kind of thinking of, of what to present you all with next? Is there, is there any other scheme that you want us to analyze, develop, talk through, or is it, is it kind of a binary, either?
I think that's it.
It's what, it's what Jan just said.
The max build line.
Max build line.
Max build line.
But Douglas, to your que- I think those are the two opposite ends of the extreme, but if, you know, again, thinking about reality, it'd be nice to have that max build line overlaid on that pictorial too, but if, so there are gonna be situations where coming off the, if we said max build line plus forty feet, pick a, pick a number. There are gonna be many situations where they're not gonna be able to go out forty feet, right?
But that's fine.
Can we not allow some discretion in the permitting process?
Let me finish just for a second. To that, to your point, Elizabeth, around some discretion. I just, again, I think we're trying to solve for every situation, every, and I totally agree with what, in ten years, are we gonna be patting ourselves on the back or getting punched in the nose, and probably both. But, um, you know, trying to solve for every situation is absolutely impossible. Trying to figure out a way to build a contiguous wall is absolutely impossible because not everybody's gonna do that. So I think to your point, Douglas, I think it's, I think if we can just take a look at an ordinance that does both things, gets us totally out of the way, or max build line plus some numbers.
Plus some amount. And I guess for us to know how to create that amount, we would kind of back to the idea of protect as many pools as possible, or as kind of reasonable. I mean, I think there's gonna be some anomalies sticking away.
Absolutely.
So we'll have option one and option two.
I mean, that seems, I think, this, you know, unfortunately for our residents and everybody else, I mean, we, we have been making the sausage for the last hour, but it's just, you just gotta do that. I mean, you just kind of gotta walk through.
Are we?
We spent other time on this stuff.
Are we fairly comfortable with the rest of, um, the ordinance? I, I, I get the sense that everybody's pretty, everything else seemed.
There's some.
So you don't have to get, so you don't have to like throw it away and start over, like, I mean, really, what it comes down to that we're debating is where.
Yeah, we're simplifying the language for the OCRM jurisdiction, just be consistent throughout the, throughout the document. That's, there's some other editorial.
Yeah, this, this might be a net, but I think there has been some discussion, are, are the requirement that an engineer is gonna put their name on the paper to say that there not gonna be any impact to a neighbor, I think, I don't know that an engineer would actually do that.
So that, that is a, a section that we took out of the Town of Edisto's ordinance. They allow revetments, but they must be sort of designed and certified by an engineer to not negatively impact the adjacent lawn.
Approved by us.
We did hear feedback from one engineer that had exactly that concern. We've asked him if there was kind of middle-of-the-road language that basically said they've taken reasonable precaution to, to try to get an engineer more comfortable with signing it, because I think that is a, currently, that is a concern that maybe not all engineers are gonna be willing to work for these property owners because of that certification statement. So we're gonna see if, if there's a way that we can meet the same intent, but get the engineers.
An alternative would be to, um, have, have a fee attached to the application that pays for the city to have an engineer certify what they've done.
Get out of the way. Absolutely not.
All right.
Well, that would be, that would fall liability on the city.
Yeah.
I do, I do want to know, is, is there an expectation of the city council meeting later this week?
We're headed that direction. What's the timing for drafting, do you think?
We've already made some edits based on the discussion that we have had.
John, we're talking about next steps and timing for.
Are you saying this week?
Um, I, I, I think we would, we could be ready this week. Thursday.
To, to have a.
Thursday or Friday to have a special meeting.
Is it Tuesday night, Rayman? You're saying OC agenda tomorrow?
Yeah. Let's, 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 let's step back for a second, yeah.
I mean, I understand this is an urgent matter, so I would.
We appreciate your efforts.
Friday?
It's Friday.
No.
Monday's a holiday, right?
And Monday is a holiday.
How about? How about Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, the twentieth? Is that what we want? Okay.
Yep. Katie, you.
Is there a regular council meeting Tuesday?
No, sir.
No, it's the twenty-seventh, yeah.
Oh, it's late this month, yeah.
Yeah. Do it at six. And, and I think we just, and that'll be a council meeting, not a workshop, so we get some consensus, we could vote if we needed to and move it along.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
And we'll have time to review.
We will share that as soon as we finish.
Yeah, and that's kind of the other thing. If we, y'all make it turn it tomorrow, but to have a meeting tomorrow or Thursday, council hasn't had any time, or residents haven't, hasn't had any time to opine or spend on review. So I think if we can at least have a weekend to peruse.
So next Tuesday, we'll be.
Next Tuesday, special meeting with two options. See for further sausage making or voting, which. See for further sausage making or voting, whichever way we go. All right, next item. Discussion of surf instruction applications for 2024. Desiree had in your book, you know, this is an annual exercise we do. We've got five folks that have put in applications. I think these are our repeat from last year and possibly a year before. And I know we wanna talk a little bit about the people on six and ocean and eight, given projects that are happening down here. So, Desiree, sorry.
Yeah, I, and I have not done this, but I do intend to reach out to these, to those two folks and just inform, inform them of the upcoming work, particularly down that end of the beach and ask them to provide an alternate location for them to mobilize in the event that that area is not accessible due to the erosion in the project. So I intend to have that information back to you all when you decide on the applications at the end of this month.
Okay. And I just, I think Tuesday is our Dominion meeting? That's a community meeting, right, for the tree trimming?
Yes.
Oh, next Tuesday?
Yeah, I think it is. Do you know what, I don't know what time that is.
Starts at 4:30? Five starts at?
Five at the rec center.
And it's, that, that is a drop-in meeting, so people would be dropping in between five and six.
Six could be reasonable to keep a council meeting.
So we want the meeting at six?
I think so.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about surfing. I was so confused there.
We are. I was backing up for a second. Yeah.
That was a good catch. Yeah, I mean, there's, back to the surfing. There's nobody above 27th, so there's space up on the north. For the people at sixth and eighth, I don't feel like that's, if, if they need to move from sixth Avenue and eighth.
Yeah. Desiree, you can work that out?
Yeah.
Sorry, back on this to me, council meeting again. Katie, did you say you need it at six or can we do it at five?
I said six is good.
About 5:30?
5:30 would be fine.
5:20? Let's do 5:30.
Okay.
Don't care, Katie.
A mic can make it. All right. Good to go. Thank, Desiree, anything else on surfing?
No, sir, that's all.
We'll try to.
Should we surf in now?
We're surfing. We're going to financial review now.
We've already surfed.
We are surfed. Deborah, financial statements and project worksheets, please.
Okay, I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible with the financial statements. I just wanna talk about revenue a little bit. It looks like we, our revenue are not coming in as quickly as we had anticipated. The general fund is only 37% of where we should be at 58%. And that's mostly due to the property taxes. The, there are some timing differences there. It looks like we should collect about $2.5 million in February, per the treasurer's office. And what they said, that we did collect some in January, but that was mostly from people that paid their property taxes through their mortgages. And that only accounts for about 28% of property taxes collected. We're also not getting the local option tax and some of the other state and county taxes in a timely manner either. And that's just from how they sent us the, the funds, so we don't have any control over that. Our rental licenses, the, they, the due date is April 30th. So hopefully we should see some revenue coming in, coming in for that. Last year, we collected $1,071,000 in April and May, which account for 67% of the total collection. So hopefully the same will apply this year. Expenses are, are pretty much in line. We're 55% for the general fund to a target of 58%. The public safety did receive their wage increases in July, I'm sorry, January. And all of the other departments received the wage increases in February, so that will be reflected on the next statements. Cash, the cash fund, fund balance is $43 million. There are some notes for January that you, you can read over if, if you like. But I just wanna point out that we did receive two grants this month. One was a million dollars for the stormwater collection and drainage and the other was $500,000 for the ADA compliance board, boardwalk for beach access. The tourism schedules. We changed the graphs, added some graphs on there, so you can kind of see how they're, how the, the funds are coming in and how they're starting to decrease a little bit. Note that the, the schedules that you have in your packet may be a little bit different because some of the numbers did change. The graphs were a little off, so the ones on the screen should be corrected. The muni accommodation tax, we received $51,000 this month. And if you look at FY '23, that was $185,000, which is like triple the amount. But in FY '22, they, we received $70,000 and then 71. And you see how the numbers are starting to kind of stabilize, trying to get back to where we were, I guess, pre-COVID. So they're starting to level off a little bit.
We, we do think, when we look at the detail from the county, we do think that there's a delay in the processing of some of the payments. In, in that payment, we see processing, them processing payments from October, even August, July of last year. So we do think that there is a lag there from, from the county's perspective and collecting and processing and paying it to us. But, but I think we need to, we need to be looking at this very, monitoring it very closely because it does seem that maybe our tourism revenues are starting to level off. We saw a, an unprecedented, unprecedented increase right after COVID when, you know, people were driving in and, and, and selecting in, to stay in, in state rather than traveling, traveling via plane. So I, I think we might be seeing some of that shift now that things have slowly stabilized when, after the pandemic.
Yeah, and particularly to the muni ATAX. I mean, when you look at the state and the county, they're, they're not anywhere near the drops. I think it's completely a timing issue on the municipal ATAX money, personally.
Well, we'll be monitoring it.
Yeah.
As, you know, we don't really do.
State accommodation tax, we're at $353,000 compared to 360 in FY '23. The, we haven't received any, the, the second quarter yet for the Charleston County ATAX pass-through. Hospitality taxes, we're $63,000, which is a little bit higher than where we were last year this time. The beach preservation is, we're, you know, right there at that $51,000, same as muni A. And the local option tax, we're at $95,000 where we were compared to $93,000 from FY '23.
And that's a strong economic activity indicator. So I think to your point, Mayor, it might be just a timing issue.
That's my hope. I'm going with that.
Quick question. Regarding the, I know we're going back a little bit, on the business licenses, business license revenue, you said that was tracking a little slower, down for a little bit. Are we, I think a year or two ago, we were talking about requiring a little bit more documentation for the stated revenues, which is what generates the, the business license. Are we, has that process been implemented? I, I know I just got my request for my new business license. Am I gonna be required to provide some kind of documentation on my revenue streams? Or is that, or how is that gonna happen? Are we still on the trust me system?
So that is a change we did, so it'll be, we'll see it in renewal this year.
It has, it has been happening.
Yeah.
Already. So like, I got my notification. When I, when I apply for my business license, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna be requested to provide some documentation off of tax return. That's correct. Okay, good.
Yeah, we have a list of the forms that we accept to verify gross income.
Thank you. Scott, just to clarify, are you talking about a rental house? I'm talking about all business licenses. So I, I think we are only doing that for rental. For short-term rentals, okay.
We talked about doing an audit, spot audit on some businesses over the years, but.
Please don't do it.
Yeah, cuz I'm, yeah, I've, I've been trying to, trying to tie out, yeah. I've, I've been trying to reconcile like, you know, what we get for ATAX revenues versus what we get off the business licenses. And it seems like there's a disconnect on the, on the rental side of things.
Well, you, you would do that by looking at short-term rental licenses.
Correct. No, that's not, I'm talking on the short-term rental side.
Yeah. So we will be able to do that now because in short-term rentals, we are requiring that documentation. That's what would tie out to accommodations taxes.
But we are, we are in discussion about that.
Well, we've, so we have, we have been approached by several of the property managers who are having, I guess, concerns about the amount of documentation that we're, that we're requesting. And I guess some of the properties that they manage, they prepare 1099s and there, there's a request for the city to consider a 1099 as the proof of, of gross receipts. The challenge with the 1099s is that the one that the, the, the property manager prepares for that property, that doesn't guarantee us that that is the total gross income that that property generated. Because if they are being managed by multiple, if they are rented by different types of, of platforms, whether they do it by themselves or they do it through Airbnb or through multiple management companies, that 1099 won't be, won't reflect all of those potential income sources.
I'm well aware of that. We're in discussion.
But we are requiring documentation.
Correct. We, we, we have a list of, of forms on the website.
You know, some of the property owners are saying, well, you're not requiring that from a restaurant, so why are you requiring it from me? It's, it's late. I don't wanna get into it, but there's, there's work to be done on this.
There's, there's no reason why we shouldn't then consider and requiring the same type of documentation for any business license then. I know we, we spent a lot of time last year just talking about short-term rental and specifically, but I think the same would apply for any business license, application.
So are we requiring tax returns from restaurants now?
At this point, no, but I think that that may.
That's what I'm talking about.
That may have been an oversight on our part. There's no reason why they, we should treat any of them differently. I think that the goal of this whole process is verify gross, gross receipts of any business.
I think we need to think that through. I mean, we get renewals from Lowe's and I don't, we're gonna, I don't know what.
Right. We're just opening up a huge can of worms. Well, like I said, I'd like to be able to have the communication open and so we, we can discuss it. This just gets, it gets very complicated very quickly.
Yeah. I mean, a 1099 is what is submitted on my company's behalf on each individual property owner. So, and it's submitted direct to the IRS. I don't, and I guess the other concern is, you know, if someone's not filing their taxes by April, whatever the day is, 15th, you know, they file an extension, they don't have their tax return to show. But also, I mean, they're being required to show their personal financial information. It's a little.
But aren't we, aren't we requiring like the prior year? I mean, I don't, I think that during the filing period, you can provide different types of documentation. And like when I do my property taxes, I, you know, file for 6%, 4%, I have to provide documentation redacted that provides that proof of whether I'm a resident or not.
Yeah, I think it's the, it's the prior year and for like single-member LLCs, I think it's just Schedule C of the tax return. You probably know this better than anybody, Jimmy, that shows what the rental income associated with.
Depends on what kind of LLC it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If it's taxes in S corp.
S corp, S corp, S corp, trust.
And then K1s for multi-member LLCs, just showing the revenue. I think that's what we talked about. We, we consulted with the tax lawyer at our firm about that.
Thanks, Doug.
Keep moving, yeah.
Included is a, a future cash needs for capital projects. Just take a look at that. Let me know if you have any, any questions. But it kind of shows where, what we've budgeted, that's for what we've kind of spent is being backed out or added back in there. And then our future projects. So just not to prolong the time. If you have any questions regarding any of the project worksheets, just shoot me an email or, or let me know.
And I got, Desiree, this would, or Deborah, this would be our, what's on the current 10-year capital plan is here.
Correct.
Cuz I know we drafted this before we did the 10-year capital plan.
Yeah, this is for FY '24, right.
Thank you, Deborah. Is that it?
That's all I have for financials and we're gonna talk about the budget now. The 10-year capital plan? Do you want me to go line by line?
Yeah, absolutely.
No, really?
Anything over a couple hundred thousand.
Okay, I'll just. So we have, we spent some time today going through most of these with the committees, public safety, public services and facilities. The only section that has not yet been covered by a committee is general government. And really on that one, the biggest project would be the expansion, renovation, relocation of City Hall. And as you all know, we're working with Trident and some architects to develop options for us to consider. We should be getting more information on that soon and we'll be providing that to council. But that is, at this point, sort of, you know, we have a million two five for this year. All we have allocated so far is the initial assessment and development of options. We are anticipating if this is something that the city wants to pursue, construction in FY '25 and migrating it over to, over two fiscal years. But this is a very educated guess of what that could cost, a $4 million project. Obviously, we don't know what option we're gonna end up deciding, but we just wanted to keep it on the pipeline of an upcoming large project.
Desiree, it's $2 million each year, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Not a million two.
We have a million two in FY '24, in our current budget.
Got it. Sorry.
Some of it will, yes. Cuz we are not starting construction this year.
Got it. Sorry, thank you.
And I, I did this for the committees and I apologize, I did not do it for you all. But we've included the FY '24 approved total in a, an additional column. And then we've been requested that we add a, another column showing FY '25 requests as they were forecasted in last year in FY '25. So you can see the difference between that and what we're requesting now. Not a whole lot of difference, but wanted to, wanted you all to see that. For the police department, a lot of standard, of, of standard replacement of vehicles, replacement of ATV vehicles. We have a request and a need to replace the access control system for both the public safety building and fire station two. Fire department, we spent some time today at public safety talking about, not for FY '25, but for the next 10 years, our infrastructure needs for vehicles. And there's some ideas about consolidation of equipment that would allow us to have better capabilities and, and reduce some of the financial impact that these trucks have, have on our budget. We also included, the only other thing I wanted to highlight with the fire department is we're working with our grant writer to request a FEMA pork grant for the purchase of a new rescue boat. The boat that we currently have is the center console boat. It's not really equipped for firefighting and rescue. It's very difficult for them to use it for that, for that purpose. And we are pursuing FEMA grants. This boat, it's approximately a million dollars. The grant would cover 75% of that, so about $300,000 would be the city's, the city's share or the local share. What we have discussed is because the fire department does respond to calls in the region and Goat Island, Dewey's Island, areas that are unincorporated parts of Charleston County, that we request the county assistance to cover that local portion. Because a lot of the calls that are folks, I think 77 last year, water rescue calls, a lot of them are servicing not only Alapam's residents, but Charleston County residents as well. So that would be our intention if this is something that the city approves. Public works, you know, we're talking with the committee about the need to start thinking about changing the way that we collect garbage from a rear-end traditional way that requires folks being on the back of the, back of the truck to a side loader operation, which is consistent to what a lot of communities do and our recycling operation. It is not feasible for the city to completely move to a side, side loader operation just because of there are some areas on, on the island that that's just not possible, some cul-de-sacs and some tight, tight streets. So we are at the beginning stages of evaluating what that would look like. We do anticipate at some point in the future, not really having a choice because it, it continues to be more and more difficult to get temp agencies to provide this type of temp labor. provide this type of temp labor, um, that we, that we currently rely on for garbage operations. So that's why you see in the out years, a higher, a higher expenditure associated with these trucks because they are more expensive, um, to, to, to buy. But we do anticipate some savings, um, associated with needing less, um, labor to operate and manage them. Um, as part of that whole transition, um, we would be needing to replace all garbage cans on the island to a, a new type of garbage can that we're currently using and replacing the old ones with, with this new, this new garbage can. But we would need, before we fully transition, we would need to make sure that everybody on the island has this type of garbage. So that is a big expense that we are seeing for the next few years. So that's, um, starting FY twenty-five towards FY twenty-seven. Yes, ma'am.
In terms of servicing cul-de-sacs, um, we may just want to change the behavior of people living in the cul-de-sacs, placing their garbage cans in an area where they could be picked up.
Yeah, this is, this is many years out there.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, definitely there will be, there will be a need of change of behavior, uh, for sure. Um, if we, if we go down that route.
What does recycling do with those? Do they, do those people not get serviced?
That has, that has happened. They have, they have left notices to those folks and, um, they've, they've struggled. I'll just put it like that. People are just used to putting it on the side. And in these streets, they would have to move it to the other side. And, um, we have more instances than not that they are just.
Struggling.
They're just not collecting those.
All right, let's move on.
So for Public Works, we have drainage. That's obviously one of our biggest priorities. The big project that we have, um, scheduled and, um, anticipated for FY twenty-five is installing drainage infrastructure on Palm Boulevard between thirty-seventh and forty-first. Uh, the reason we're selecting that project as our next project is, um, the fact that there is a sewer line, sewer, yeah, a sewer line project that the Water and Sewer Commission got grant, grant dollars for, that is going to be constructed next year. So we want to piggyback on that. Jan, trying to, um, be maybe the only community that gets to, um, consolidate projects, hopefully.
Coordinate projects, yeah.
Um, and it is a, a high priority, um, area, um, identified by, by our engineers. Let's see, Recreation Department, really one, one big item that's being requested is, um, five hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of the playground equipment. It, um, a lot of it is very, very old. Um, it's getting really hard, uh, or harder to replace parts because it's no longer available. Um, the playground equipment is about three hundred thousand dollars of that five hundred. The other two hundred thousand is associated with, um, replacing the mulch with a pour and play, uh, material, which is a foam material that doesn't need to be replaced as often as the mulch does. So that's just an all-in number. We are looking at opportunities to face that, um, if, if we can and, and just what options, what options we have.
So it's not a half million dollar scoreboard?
No, ma'am. It's a playground equipment that is very popular in the Recreation Department. I'm, I'm kind of going through unless anybody has any questions. From Beach Area, public restrooms, that pretty much stays the same. Beach maintenance, here you can see, um, I'm on page, um, I don't know what page it is in the packet, but, uh, fifty-three beach maintenance, we have five hundred thousand dollars. And this is the grant that we received, Deborah, um, um, reported on that for two ADA compliant, uh, boardwalks. Our plan is to have those ready for construction at the end of this year. Um, so we want to spend that money next year. Two hundred and fifty thousand for the emergency vehicular access path project with the county park. We talked about last month how the timing is just not going to work out for us to get that project completed before the season. So we'll have to re-budget. And based on some of the, um, design and, um, just changes that we've gotten from the county, we anticipate that cost going up a little bit. Um, so we've budgeted, rebudgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then, um, here you can see we've, um, we've included four hundred thousand dollars, which is what we anticipate the city portion of the Army Corps of Engineers project would probably cause. This is what we would be doing in addition to what, uh, after they place the sand, um, putting it there. I mean, I think in, in all likelihood, that will fall in FY twenty-four. We don't have anything budgeted there. But as we know, the schedule will refine that, um, as we move along. We've included, um, uh, two placeholder amounts for shoal management, some medium-term projects for both, both ends. The likelihood of getting them permitted this year, it's, it's, it's not, um, you know, we don't know, we don't think so, but we're planning and working towards getting them permitted. Um, and really, you know, the Army Corps project, as we all know, there's a little bit of unknown, of an unknown of how well it'll perform and how long it will last. So the, the, the ideal scenario is it gives us a few years before we have to do, uh, execute a, another either shoal management or dredging or offshore project, um, in that area. For the out years, you can see here, we included, uh, funds for the continuing work designing these larger projects. Thirteen million dollars is what would be, we would be probably looking at around Breach Inlet if we have to do a large-scale project. Um, the Wild Dunes project, we certainly want to do any, if we need to do projects on both ends, we would want to do it, um, doing, do it, geez, what time is it? Um, do them at the same time. Um, because the larger chunk of the cost of these projects is the mobilization and demobilization. So we want to, we've been kind of planning for the past few years to do it at the same time. Um, so we're, we're looking at FY twenty-seven, but again, there's a little bit of unknown, um, when we would be able to execute a large, a large-scale project. I think this helps paint the picture of the amount of funding that we're, that we need to look for, um, to execute these, these projects. Um, for the Wild Dunes piece, we've looked at a twenty-five percent cost share. You know, as you all know, the city has participated with the Wild Dunes Community Association and the resort in the past. The city's participation has fluctuated between fourteen and maybe eighteen, nineteen percent, um, because the city has been able to secure funding from the state and FEMA due to hurricanes. That may not, that may not be, um, available to us, um, for a future project. We, we just don't know. But we are anticipating it being a cost share, um, scenario, just like the past two projects. And then the Alapam's Marina, we have the public green space and, um, that is, that is not in our current budget. Our, our goal was to have that project completed in FY twenty-four. But as we heard from, um, all the, you know, the conversations surrounding the parking layout with the restaurant and all the work associated with the Forty-First Avenue drainage ditch, it is very unlikely that we'll be able to complete that before June. So we'll, we'll need to re-budget that for FY twenty-five. And we've also included the, um, T dock repairs that we'll be bidding out separately, extending those finger piers. And also the improvements and, um, resurfacing to reconfigured parking lot, assuming we can get to a, um, agreed-upon plan.
But the, uh, public dock was, construction will start on that on, in March.
Yes, construction is slated to start in March. So there may, there may, there may be some, um, migration, some funds that are expended in FY twenty-five that we'll have to re-budget. Um, the anticipated completion date or substantial completion date is May. But as we know, some of these projects get delayed because of lead times for materials. Um, so as we get closer, we'll make those adjustments.
I just wanted to make the point, we're re-budgeting green space primarily, but public dock is on a path.
Public dock will be, will be done hopefully by the time we do the green space. All right. Um, then the last piece that I just wanted to highlight is our, um, debt service schedule for the next few, for the next ten years. You can see that in FY twenty-five, we will retire Fire Station Two, that, that GO bond. And in FY twenty-eight, the pub, the original public safety building bond, um, will be, will be over. Look at those interest rates. Isn't that wild?
One comment. Could you go back to that total slide, back, uh, one on the bond? Or not, yes, the next one. Uh, no, no, uh, towards the end. And one more. Uh, one more. There you go. So at the bottom there, um, and I, I think we did not, maybe at the ratified budget, did we not put in the beach renour, we didn't have a beach renourishment in that old budget. Um, and where I'm going is if I go across the, the nine years that kind of overlap with the budget we just ratified for, in twenty, for FY twenty-four, I think we've got about a thirty million, nearly a thirty million dollar increase in our projected capital budget. And I think about seventeen of that has to do with the beach renourishment, but we're up across most of the years. And, um, as we're going through the budget, and my guess is that these numbers are probably more real than what we might've had in the prior budget. If we're seeing a thirty million dollar increase over the next nine years, we might want to have some conversation about how we're going to come up with those funds. And somebody check my numbers too, because.
Yeah, I need to look at that.
Yeah, year to year, year to years, um, where we were on, in this schedule. And I think seventeen of it is the beach renourishment. But I think that we're seeing an increase in costs across the board. Um, and that's a pretty big, you know, that's a pretty big number. And I, and like I said, I think even on the beach renourishment, you said it might be closer to twenty than the thirteen. Um, so, you know, these numbers may even be a little bit light. So we might want to make sure we've got, um, as conservative of numbers as possible.
Just a follow-up to that. Um, is some of this money rollover from this, from this year's, past year's budget? So it's not, do you know what proportion is rollover?
We'll, we'll get into that at budget workshop. We got a lot more work to do on that. And that'll be next month. We'll have a budget workshop to look at the ten-year capital plan again, the operating budget, which is kind of next step for these folks. Um, so there's much more to come.
Yeah, double, yeah, check my numbers.
Any questions?
Quick, quick, quick. Just what's happening.
How about what's different? What's different from last month?
It's all capital.
They're all chugging.
It's all projects.
I mean, with everything we have to deal with, I'm really proud that we, you know, all of this is still getting, some of this is still getting done. Drainage, it's underway as we know. Um, the sea level rise adaptation plan, we'll have a technical workshop later this month, um, which, you know, would help identify the agreed-upon levels for sea level rise. And that'll drive a lot of the technical, um, the technical information for the design of whatever recommendations are included. We talked about the Marina public dock starting next month. Dredging, it's an ongoing process. Um, they're preparing the pre-application. Um, they're preparing the application and holding pre-application meetings with the regulatory agencies. Beach maintenance, let me see, we opened bids for the, I mean, not, not we, the Army Corps of Engineers opened bids this month. And I think we've notified you all, uh, there is one bid that was favorable and they do anticipate, um, issuing a contract this month and issuing a notice to proceed in March. We don't know yet what the exact start date for that project, but the, then the contractor is a contractor that's working on a project for the Core Merle's inlet. So they would have to relocate down here when they finish.
At least they're close.
Correct. And Coastal Science and Engineers continues working towards, um, the pre-application process for, um, identifying borrow areas on this end and working with the state historic preservation office for the borrow areas on the north end. Uh, fire station, um, fire department exhaust system, so that, that is complete. City Hall is continues to work with Trident and MPS for, um, the city hall relocation and expansion options. Dock park is almost, almost close to being complete. Um, undergrounding power lines, we talked about that project having to be delayed, the construction potentially having to be delayed until the end of, uh, this year. Um, and then the only thing that I have on the agenda, and for some reason, I think the print area on this sheet did not include is the twenty, twenty-first Avenue sidewalk expansion and repair. Um, the county has selected an engineer to do that. They're working on the design. I anticipate getting a, a copy of that next month. Um, they would be going out for, for bidding at the end of the year and construction happening first quarter of twenty twenty-five. A little bit slower than we are.
Uh, just a tad, yeah. Yeah, cause we got notified of the award in fall of last year.
Correct, yeah.
For a sidewalk.
We're very grateful that the county is.
Agreed. Is that it?
I think that's it.
All right, last item, real quick on legislative reports. So the MAS C hometown legislative day, a number of us went up, Scott, Jan, myself, John, Ashley, some stayed over for a second day of, um, some additional training. We co-hosted a reception and dinner with Mount Pleasant with our state legislators. We had a breakfast with our lobbyists. Um, I think the couple of takeaways were MAS C is very strongly, as we are too, opposed to the short-term rental bill that's up for the third time this year. So at our, um, council meeting latest, later this month, since we have new council, we may, um, pass another resolution to show our opposition to the short-term rental bill. Lot of discussion with our lobbyists around beach funding. And, uh, once they get through laughing at us, you're on your own. Good luck, uh, good luck to you and yours on that. You know, Chip Campson, Senator Campson has tried to get a recurring funding item in the state budget. This will be the second or third year, I can't remember, that he's tried to pull that off, which is smart and the right thing to do, but very little support broadly far, which is, Katie, to your point, mind-boggling. So the governor has, I think, seven million in the budget for a line item for beach renourishment, which is a joke, but.
He's good to get any help from Green Bull, huh?
And therein lies the issue. Green Bull, he can, yeah, pick a spot. So, yeah, and mo, most of them have houses here. No further business.
Bush to adjourn.
All those in favor. Seven forty-seven, all.